Good evening, everybody. Everybody is doing well tonight. Welcome to the special city council meeting for the City of Antioch of March the 4th, 2025. It is now 6:03 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Torres Walker.
President.
Councilmember Freitas.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rocha.
Here.
Mayor Bernard.
Here.
We have a quorum with all present.
Will you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Next on our agenda for tonight is budget study session, fiscal year 2025 to 2027 budget development. And we are going to be looking, getting information from staff and looking for feedback and direction as we develop the budget coming forward. I just want to say before I turn this over to the city manager that this is a process that, first of all, I'm really glad to see so many people out here to be a part of this. It's really important for the community to give us your voices when it comes to these important decisions that we're going to be making over the next several months. Tonight, in our study session, we're just going to be gathering information from departments and making sure that we understand what it is that they're working on, what it is that they're proposing to be working on in the next two years ahead. And then also, in that process and during that process, gaining your input and questions so that we can make sure as we go through this budget process that is going to be happening and concluded in the end of June of this year, in the next three months or so, that we'll make sure we have the most informed, best budget that matches up with the city councils and the community's priorities. We understand that this budget is challenged, I will say. There's a lot more expenses than there is revenue right now. That's nothing to become overly alarmed over. It's something that we will be able to walk through and make sure that we are prioritizing public safety, which is important to all of us, while we're also acknowledging that there's a lot of programs that the city is currently funding that help address things like homelessness, mental health crisis, and other needs of our community. So there are a lot of demands that we understand our community has expects to be met, and so we will be going through that process to determine what's the best route to arrive at a final budget that does our best to meet as many of those needs as we can. And so again, I just want to thank you all for being here. You'll have an opportunity to speak tonight. If you haven't put up a speaker card and want to, please fill one out. They're in the back of the room, and you can leave it up on the edge of the ledge there next to our city clerk, and then she will call your name when it's time for public comments. So I will turn this over to our city manager, Bessie Scott, for her to introduce this item.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. And thank you to everyone for attending our budget study session tonight and to those watching online. We have started YouTube streaming. It'll be official on April 1st, our first few meetings in April. So thanks for your public comments and requests on that. So tonight is a test night, so you might find yourself on YouTube. This session is the second of six meetings we will host over the next few months. I am encouraged to see strong interest from our community. Your engagement is invaluable, and I look forward to hearing your feedback. We all recognize the seriousness of our city's financial challenges. That's why we have convened these special sessions to ensure a transparent, thorough, and thoughtful approach as we craft a budget that meets the needs of our growing city while serving our residents for years to come. A reminder that these sessions are fact-finding discussions, as the mayor has mentioned. No decisions will be made tonight. Instead, we will work together to assess departmental needs and explore ways to meet them. This is a process, and I hope it provides valuable insights for everyone involved. Transparency also means honesty about the challenges ahead. This will not be an easy process, and difficult decisions lie ahead. However, I want to assure you, as the mayor has done, assure you and our residents that maintaining a high-quality public safety services remains our top priority. I also deeply value the initiatives and programs that support our youth, our unhoused residents, victims of violence, and those vulnerable to the opioid crisis. These programs save and change lives, and we will carefully consider their future as we move forward. I'm hopeful that through collaboration and open dialogue, we will find solutions that uphold our city's values and priorities. So thanks for your participation, and we look forward to your public comments. First up, we have Director Tasha Johnson from the Public Safety and Community Resources. She will go through her present. Actually, you're first. Are you first? Dawn, I'm sorry. Take it back. We have our finance director, Dawn Merchant, who will go through the first part of the budget overview. We'll pass it over to Director Johnson to go through public safety and community resources afterwards, but I believe there will be public comment in between Director Merchant's presentation. Thanks so much.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Excuse me, Director Merchant. I think what our goal was is to go through the reports and then allow public comment on those and then come back to council. Thank you.
Okay, so this is our second budget study session. On January 27th, we had a real high-level overview of where we thought fiscal year '25 was going to land. So now this is our first deep dive into the budgets, and we're starting with the Police Department and Public Safety and Community Resources. So each of those departments have prepared a PowerPoint detailing their budgets, kind of going over some goals and programs. And there's attachment packets to the staff reports that actually give, in more detail, the budget spreadsheets for each of the departments with some explanations of the breakdown of categories we've reported and some variance analysis. But before I turn it over to Director Johnson to go over her PowerPoint for the Public Safety and Community Resources, I just wanted to outline that on page three of the staff report, we have a general fund budget summary, which lists the revised budget for '25 as it stands right now, and then our draft budgets as of right now that we have. But of course, these are somewhat fluid. These are going to change as we move through each study session. One, the fiscal year '25 numbers could be revised as we get, you know, more transactions come into the year and we learn more information. And then also, as we incorporate any feedback from the budget sessions moving forward, you know, these numbers will be changing until we craft the final budget to be adopted in June. As was mentioned, we do have a challenging budget ahead based on the figures. You can see in the fiscal year '26 budget, based on what's in this draft as of right now, we have a $15.6 million operating deficit, meaning we're overspending by $15.6 million, and then $17.5 million in '26, '27. This is before we scrub the budget further and shift around priorities that the city council has as we hear feedback from the public and kind of where they want their monies to go. Some of the things that have contributed to having such a large deficit is the fact that our revenues are, continue to remain fairly flat. As outlined in the staff report, our sales taxes are really coming in under projections. We're having to adjust the current year down by $1.2 million. When we've met with our sales tax consultant recently, it's just a shift in the state overall. They're shifting away from purchasing taxable goods right now into more non-taxable goods. Antioch is not alone. It's statewide. So that basically reduces the base of what we could experience for sales tax in fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27 because we're down 1.2, so we have to reduce the next two years by 1.2 million, each of those fiscal years going out. And another challenge is an increase in our general liability insurance premiums and workers' comp premiums. As outlined in the staff report, our general liability premiums going up 16% next year, and workers' comp premiums are going up 28%. So those are additional challenges that we're facing. From the initial budgets that departments put together, the city manager and myself met with all the departments to go through their budgets, and we asked them, you know, what contracts would, can we reduce to do the minimum operating levels over the next two years to see how we can address the deficit initially? So on page five of the staff report, in fiscal year '27, we were able to reduce expenditures by $8.6 million, and in fiscal year '27, $9.3 million. Of course, this will be under review for city council, and if they want us to make any adjustments to these initial expenditure reductions we've made, we will, you know, absolutely follow that direction from the city council. Some of just the larger items to do that we've done is, we've recognized some phased-in hiring to have vacancy savings in the Police Department of $4.5 million in fiscal year '26 and $4.7 million in fiscal year '27. And just for council edification, in fiscal year '25, due to all the vacancy savings in the Police Department, we've recognized a little over $4 million in the revised fiscal year '25 number in vacancy savings in the Police Department, just because of how long it takes to hire. We hire a bunch, and then, as you know, a lot leave. So we are successful, and we kind of get a net zero every time we hire a bunch leave. Another thing that we've done in this budget, which helps with significant savings, is remove the vehicle replacement set aside just for the general fund for the next two years. The city maintains an internal service fund where we set aside the replacement cost of vehicles. We amortize the vehicle over their service life, and we set aside funds so that when it's time to replace that vehicle in five years, 10 years, 12 years, whatever the service life is, that we take it out of that vehicle replacement fund. Because this is money that we're paying to ourself, we felt it was more important to remove it over these next two years from the general fund and save $1.1 million over the next two fiscal years. And if there's any vehicles that at the end of their service life that don't have enough money set aside, we'll just take it from the balance in that vehicle replacement fund going forward. And as of June 30th, 2024, just, you know, the balance in that vehicle replacement fund was $11.5 million. So with that, I will turn it over to Director Johnson to go through her PowerPoint presentation. Once we get through the PowerPoint presentation and then any questions, we can also then look at the individual budget worksheets that are in attachment seeded in the staff report. But I also have that loaded on this computer, so we can put that up on the screen once we get through that for any specific questions and comments you want to take on those. But that'll turn over to Director Johnson.
Thank you, Director Merchant. I will put our power. Oh, it's there. Great. Okay. So good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Tasha Johnson, Director of Public Safety and Community Resources for the community members that are here. Thank you so much for showing up, and it looks like you're showing out, so thank you for being here. I would like to just express how grateful we are for the opportunity for this discussion, and I'm a teacher at heart, so when you say "study," sign me up. I'm here for it so we can have a conversation. I need everyone to know that our department's budget is rooted in our commitment to building a safer, more supportive, and sustainable city for all. Our work, that includes housing and homelessness, environment sustainability and resilience, violence intervention and prevention, and youth services, are all critical areas that directly impact the well-being of our residents currently and in the future. This department's approach is not just about providing resources, but it's also about engaging and listening to our community, responding to the urgent needs and changing needs, and working together to drive the meaningful change our city needs. With the Public Safety and Community Resources Department only being 2% of the city's entire general fund budget, we have been intentional about how we allocate these funds. Since they aren't a lot with all the given areas, we have to be intentional and we are not arbitrary in our selection of programs. We're committed to investing in the areas where we can clearly demonstrate progress and make the greatest impact. In just two and a half years, this is a big brag point for us, but in just two and a half years, since the inception of this incredible department, we have successfully secured close to $10 million in grant funding not related to ARPA and not tied to the general fund with a variety, thank you, with a variety of funding sources. It is also important to acknowledge that if these issues aren't addressed, the negative financial impacts on the city will only grow. Unchecked violence leads to increased crime and emergency response costs. Lack of youth engagement can also lead to increased crime, school truancy, and lost opportunities in workforce development. Homelessness, if not mitigated, drives up costs related to encampment abatements, emergency healthcare, and also public safety responses. And without strong housing sustainability efforts, our business development and overall economic stability will in fact suffer. Investing in solutions today helps us avoid higher costs and greater challenges in the future. We ask ourselves as a department, can we truly expect to make meaningful change without investing in it? And the answer is no. So the next question was, well, whose responsibility is it to make this investment, right? Is it the community? Absolutely. Is it the county? Absolutely. Is it local businesses? Yes. Private philanthropy? Yes. City investment? Absolutely. It's going to take all of us working together to truly make a change and drive this impact that we're seeking to have, and this is why we, as a department, have prioritized partnerships with local organizations and CBOs, businesses, residents, AUSD, the county, and advocates to create these lasting solutions. Tonight, our team will walk you through how this budget supports these innovative strategies. Some of them are new to Antioch, so we appreciate the opportunity to pilot and champion some of these initiatives, expand the critical services that are already in existence, and strengthen our capacity to continue addressing these complex challenges. Our goal, again, is to ensure that every dollar invested reflects our shared vision, a city for where all the residents truly have an opportunity that lives here. So our team looks forward to your questions and continued collaboration in this study session discussion. So as I said, we house these critical topics, and we have been extremely productive with the team that we have. So environment sustainability and resiliency, housing and homelessness, violence intervention and prevention, and last but certainly not least, our youth services network. This is our organization chart. So having talked about all those important critical topics, this is the grand team. We have nine people, and I just want to point out that the black box does not come from general fund. That comes from our Waste Management Fund and our CDBG slash Housing Successor Funds. So the general fund is the director, the admin assistant, youth services network manager, youth services coordinator, and the unhoused services coordinator. The vacant public safety manager and community engagement coordinator are pulling from 50% of general fund, and the other 50% has been funded by our California Violence Intervention and Prevention Grant that we secured at the beginning of the establishment of this department. With this nine-person team, again, we have secured nearly $10 million in grants. We have established four paid internship programs for youth and young adults ranging from ages 12 all the way to 26. We have established and operated a two-year transitional housing program for unhoused individuals called Opportunity Village. We have hosted over 30 citywide youth events, and we have forged deeper partnerships with county and school district. I would also be remiss at this time if I did not publicly thank the department heads and their amazing staff in the various departments that we have cross-collaborative work. So I would like to thank my colleagues for all of your input, all of your support, and all of your engagement. Some of our programs were stood up by ARPA, which is American Rescue Plan Act. That funding is reflected on the screen. So we have our community response team, AQCRT. The Police Department also calls it the Care Team, so you might hear two terms being referenced, but it's the same entity. And that was funded at $5.7 million from ARPA funds. The mayor's apprenticeship program, MAP, at the time, was set up for $625,000. And last but not least, Opportunity Village was coming out of ARPA funds at $6 million with the roughly $3.3 million for the service provider and the $2.6 for the motel lease. Opportunity Village is set to sunset, I don't know if that made sense, will sunset, on April 30th of 2025. This is just a quick snapshot of the outcomes from Opportunity Village. They will be in fact making a presentation to council that has all the information, all the details that they will be providing you this month. So just at a snapshot glance, there were 155 participants in total, 145 exited, 114 were placed in permanent stable housing, and 21 were discharged or involuntarily exited for various reasons. So we have the administration budget, and part of that budget, we had goals. And the goals were to establish internal procedures, since this is a new department, and while obviously it's a city department, we have our own flow, we have our own areas that we need to streamline, and so we will need a consultant to come on board and help us to continue to establish those processes. We will be hosting a workshop soon for legal assistance that will empower and educate the community. What's the date, Montserrat? Yes. End of April, the Immigration Legal Services will be convening an event. And we want to, through this budget, increase community trust and engagement and empower community members to help us identify the concerns and connect the individuals to the resources that the city has and the resources that are already existing out there in the communities. Sometimes there's a disconnect, and we, as a department, are trying to bridge that gap. This is how we're going to do it. So by the end of this fiscal year, we will have a consultant. We will launch a pilot community ambassador program. There is the Immigration Legal Services event happening at the end of this year, and we will need an internal training for our department moving forward for fiscal year '26 and '27. There will be the continued community ambassador program along with a training citywide for departments throughout the city. Mayor Bernard, would you like for me to pause, or do you want me to just run through the presentation and then we backtrack, or what would you prefer?
Yeah, I think it would be good just to go through the presentation, and then we can walk through it after.
Okay. So just so you know, for the sake of time, I will highlight everything in the presentation, but I'm definitely ready for whatever questions you might have with specifics attached to it. Our homeless services currently has shower services, a motel voucher program, Resource Fair, laundry services, a new-to-be-launched Emergency Housing Assistance Program, and our core team that will be starting up very soon. In fiscal year '26 and '27, we plan to continue all those programs at the same cost while adding a safe parking program, and I will go into more detail about that later. These are some of the outcomes that we've seen so far. The shower program from July 1st of 2024 to December 31st of 2024 hosted 79 unique participants, and they were able to allow over 1,000 showers. Big props. Our motel voucher program had seven participants, and one literally just got added last week because it was a former MAP participant that needed assistance, and we were able to provide that through our department. We also hosted a Resource Fair where 62 unhoused individuals attended and 21 vendors were in attendance. And lastly, we had the laundry services where there were 356 participants and 708 vouchers were dispersed. The Emergency Housing Assistance Program will start up in April 1st, and for the last three months of this fiscal year, should be estimated to serve up to 20 households. For the upcoming two-year cycle, we want to increase shower services, laundry services. By adding another day for the shower services, it's currently operating on two days in the city, and we want to increase it to three. The laundry services, we would like to double. The motel voucher, we would like to continue, and we would like to add a safe parking program along with continuing the Emergency Housing Assistance Program. These are just some of the outcomes that we're looking to see. Analysis of current homeless trends and service gaps, data-driven and actionable strategic plan, all centered around homelessness. As the landscape continues to change and shift and morph in so many quick ways that I've seen even in the three years that I've been here, it's really important that we get some sort of strategic plan and have some input from council on where your priorities are, so we, as a department, can be responsive to those desires and the community can know what we're doing with the funding that we say we're doing good things with. So that is part of the consultant assessment and strategic plan. And moving forward for fiscal year '26, '27, we will also need a grant writer as we seek to find funding that will help sustain some of these programs that already are in existence, if not even expanding more. And then the consultant will come on to help with the implementation of that said strategic plan. Violence intervention and prevention. So I would like to call Montserrat Cabral, who has been serving as the, I think it's up there. Here it is, Montserrat, sorry. So while Montserrat is setting up, our violence intervention and prevention efforts are of utmost importance, especially as the city has experienced a sharp rise in crimes against persons. Notably, homicide rates have surged 60% from 2023 to 2024 alone. So addressing this crisis requires strategic planning and patience, as building trust within the community and conducting in-depth data analysis are essential to developing an effective evidence-based solution. So recognizing this urgency, we applied and secured nearly $1.8 million from the California Violence Intervention and Prevention Grant, distributed through the Board of State and Community Corrections, and that at the time was matched by the city at 100%. Additionally, this is the exciting news, a new Cohort Five funding opportunity has recently been released, and the city is in strong position to secure another three years of funding to sustain and expand these initiatives. I just want to take a quick moment to highlight some of the impactful events and community engagement initiatives, as you see on the screen. One key effort that was really heartwarming and successful was the Sycamore Beautification Project, where we had partners from Contra Costa's Public Health Violence Prevention Division. We had a mobile health unit arrive. We had city staff, local organizations, AUSD, and community members consisting of both youth and young adults show up to clean up the area. Reducing blight in neighborhoods, as we know, can contribute to reducing crime rates. It engages the community. It makes them feel like someone cares along with them, and it enhances overall community safety. So I want to turn it over to Montserrat Cabral, who is the current Youth Services Network Manager, but she has been on special assignment, emphasis on "special," for this division until we hire the new Public Safety Manager, which is actually in the application review stage as we speak. So, Montserrat, I'll let you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, community. I see you. I'm really excited to be here, and I'm really excited to present our programs and what the budget looks like. I'm just gonna, does this work? Okay. So, my name is Montserrat Cabral. I am the Youth Services Network Manager on special assignment for Public Safety Manager. As Tasha mentioned, the City of Antioch applied for CalVIP funding in early 2022. I also want to say that I'm going through, stop me at any time, I sometimes speak quickly, but I want everyone to get a full picture of what the last two and a half, three years have looked like for us. The City of Antioch applied for the CalVIP in early 2022, and our successful award was directly tied to establishing this department. We demonstrated the critical connections between youth, homelessness, workforce development, and other factors contributing to gun violence in our community. This comprehensive approach was key in securing $1.8 million in funding matched with 100% city funding. Our efforts formally began in July 2022 through a partnership with a local community organization, An Advance Peace. However, after extensive collaboration and capacity-building efforts, the initial CBO could not meet the stringent grant requirements. This led to our decision to publish an RFP, or a Request for Proposals, to secure a provider capable of meeting these expectations. In May 2023, one day... In May two thousand and twenty-three, One Day at a Time was awarded the contract. Working alongside Advanced Peace, ODA, as One Day at a Time is affectionately called, launched the Peacemaker Fellowship, renamed Uplifting Peace, a proven model designed to engage individuals most at risk of involvement in gun violence. Advanced Peace, now a nationally recognized leader in urban violence reduction, has successfully implemented this model in multiple cities, demonstrating measurable reductions in gun-related crime. For example, the City of Richmond established its Office of Neighborhood Safety, also called ONS, in two thousand and seven, in response to escalating gun violence. At that time, Richmond's homicide was forty-five point nine for every one hundred thousand residents, making it one of the nation's most dangerous cities. In two thousand and twenty-three, with the help of Advanced Peace, Richmond recorded eight homicides, resulting in a homicide rate approximately of seven point one for a hundred and... Hundred thousand residents. This marks the lowest number of homicides in the city since nineteen ninety-one. The ONS operates with a dedicated team of more than ten with eight NCAs. Antioch has four. This staffing structure has been instrumental in their success in this model for the impact we aim to achieve in Antioch. Our goal, and I want to highlight that these numbers are from the inception to December two thousand and twenty-four. Before I walked into the meeting, I learned that some of the outcomes of our CAL VIP program through ODA actually has fifteen fellows with seven fellows certified through Occupational Safety and Health and the Transportation Worker Certification credential. Our goal is to build upon these successes by continuing to enhance our VIP strategies. As you can see, the total award is one point seven. Just so the community understands fully, we were awarded one point seven with a hundred percent match for the city, which, if you know about grants, it's extremely hard to do, because the city was kind of picking from everywhere. How can we match a hundred percent? We matched fifty percent of the Public Safety Manager and Community Engagement Coordinator, as well as the Unhoused Resident Coordinator, the Public Safety Manager, the Department Director, the Youth Services Manager, so the Crime Analyst over at PD. But one point three, almost one point seven, go directly to the consultants, which is Advanced Peace for the technical assistance and training, the evaluators of evident change, and the providers of One Day at a Time, and wages being four hundred and seventeen thousand. Some key successes have been that thirteen out of the fifteen fellows are engaged in the Peacemaker Fellowship. Ninety-two percent have reported a decrease in violent incidents. Ninety-five percent of mediation and de-escalation techniques have been successfully achieved, and ninety percent of participants have demonstrated measurable improvement in conflict resolution. Another part of this division that is widely successful is the Angelo Quinto Community Response Team, also known... Also known as the CARE Team. This team has become essential to Antioch's emergency response system, providing compassionate, specialized assistance during behavioral health crisis called into nine-one-one. Their mission is to ensure that residents in crisis receive the most appropriate care, reducing reliance on law enforcement and emergency medical services while fostering a safe and healthier community. Two AQ CRT teams actively respond to calls in the community at any given time, ensuring timely and effective support. The program is funded through ARPA for a total of five point seven million dollars since November of two thousand and twenty-two, approximately two point one for twelve months, which covers personnel, vehicles, supplies, and office rental space. The CARE Team is composed of fifteen dedicated staff members, including eleven community response specialists trained in crisis intervention, de-escalation, and behavioral health support. For two thousand and twenty-four, the AQ CRT reported six thousand six hundred and ninety-one dispatch calls for service. The highest volume categories included welfare checks, relocations, and noise party complaints with an average response of nine and a half minutes. The welfare checks encompass various service levels, including domestic violence incidents, fifty-one-fifty holds, and de-escalations of health and safety concerns. Some key outcomes for our CARE Team include: reduction in law enforcement involvement for nonviolent behavioral health crisis, allowing officers to focus on public safety matters, increased connection to mental health and social services, ensuring individuals receive follow-up care and ongoing support, decreased emergency room visits by providing on-the-ground crisis stabilization, and community trust and engagement, as residents recognize that the CARE Team is a compassionate, culturally-responsive alternative to traditional emergency response. Through its innovative approach, the CARE Team continues to reshape Antioch's response to behavioral health crisis, emphasizing care, dignity, and long-term solutions for those in need. The City of Antioch, I'm going to switch hats to Youth Services, because we're going to continue, as Mayor Bernal has stated, and we'll have questions at the end. Thank you. The City of Antioch, this is a fun part. The City of Antioch is committed to empowering our youth and young adults by providing opportunities for personal and professional growth. Through the Youth Services Division, we're helping young people develop essential skills, gain work, gain hands-on work experience, and build confidence as they transition into adulthood. A part of me wishes that I was a part of a program like this in the city that I grew up in only five years ago. Our programs connect youth with local employers, mentors, and training opportunities, but we also recognize the unique challenges that the youth face today. Our approach is well-rounded, focusing on career readiness, leadership development, and community engagement. Whether through internship, vocational training, volunteer service, or entrepreneurship, our goal is to ensure that every young person in Antioch has access to the resources and support they need to thrive. As you can see, a major part of this personnel budget goes towards paying interns. We have two full-time positions made up of the Youth Services Network Manager and the Youth Services Programs Coordinator, and two part-time interns. Build, a major part of this budget, besides the two full-time budgets and the two part-timers, which make up a little less than twenty thousand dollars, goes to pay our thirty positions for the Spring Board Internship and fifteen positions for the Build Architectural and Design Internship. Build is a six-week program that introduces young people to careers in architecture and design, while Spring Board places sixteen-to-eighteen-year-olds in different city departments, like the City Attorney's Office, Recreation, Animal Services, Youth Services, Community Development, Economic Development, City Manager's Office, and the list goes on. We'll go over some other outcomes in a moment, but one of the most notable successes is that several interns have secured part-time jobs throughout the City of Antioch while continuing their education. We have ninety-two thousand, a little over ninety-two thousand, dedicated to free events for youth and young adults across Antioch. This covers all the materials we need, as well as venue rentals when necessary, like the theater for teen movie night or bowling alley for teen bowling night. It also funds marketing efforts, including banners, flyers, promotional materials that go out to local businesses, schools, and throughout the city. Side note, all of the marketing material that you see in the... We try to make sure that every district has a banner, and that all flyer goes to local businesses. But please note that the newsletter, the flyers, the banners, all of it is created by youth ages literally sixteen to nineteen. The Instagram page, it's also the young people. The TikTok page, and some of the material that you see on the website, the interns. It also... This ensures that every event is well-planned, well-promoted, and accessible to as many young people as possible. And of course, we make sure that there's food at every event. The Antioch Council of Teen has become a big part of our youth engagement efforts. ACT, as it's sometimes called, provides a space where young people can connect with peers, engage in service projects, and plan community events. The cost to provide food and activities for ACT is about twelve thousand dollars a year. Over the past few years, we've had seventy-two unduplicated participants, and ninety-two of them have taken on leadership roles, whether in school, in the community, or city-led events. I also want to take a moment to highlight... I can highlight a lot of people, but I'm going to highlight one person, which is Morelia Gil Cubillo, which was recognized last year... Was recognized last year by the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors Leadership Award. The YAC, so much fun, the YAC. Excuse me? Yes, she is. That's Morelia. Thank you, Morelia. Thank you, Councilmember Fredis. Another important program that we support is the YAC internship. We allocate twenty thousand dollars in stipends for twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds. Do you remember being twelve? I know, for many of you, you don't, but for me, it was just the other day. And five hundred dollars was a lot. You know, these youth get to participate in a program where they're tutoring younger people. And at first, you know, I really... When you're moving through the motions and you're realizing, okay, we got eighteen to twenty-six, okay, we got the sixteen-to-eighteen-year-olds, we got the middle schoolers, but what do you do with the twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds, which is kind of right in the cusp of thinking they're grown? Love you. Thinking you're grown, but still kind of a baby, but not a baby. So how do you hold and how do you grow all at the same time? And I said, money. Most of them preferred a twenty-dollar Starbucks gift card than an actual stipend, but it felt good to be able to sit down during the evaluation phase, and they're like, my favorite part wasn't necessarily getting paid. It was the authority I had when I walked into the room, and the kids looked at me like, yeah, there's my tutor. Or the fact that they're like, hey, no matter what my day looked like, I had to walk in there, and I had to show up for these other kids who really depended on me to be able to read. And I thought, that was beautiful. One of the biggest impacts, which I'm going to repeat now, because it's on my paper. One of the biggest impact we've seen in this program is building confidence, not just in the students receiving tutoring, but also in the tutors themselves, who are developing leadership and communication skill that will serve them in the future. As I said earlier, a significant portion of our budget, ninety thousand dollars, ninety-two, two fifty, is dedicated to events that provide young people with safe, positive opportunities. These include events like the Teen Block Party, the Back-to-School Bowling, the Teen Pottery Night, the Teen Skate, the Teen Movie, the Teen Swim Night, as well as others that create spaces where young people can connect, build friendships, and just have fun. These types of events are essential, not just for entertainment, but also for supporting youth's mental well-being, fostering a sense of belonging, and keeping them engaged in positive activities. I think we all know the connection between keeping your hands busy and making sure that you have connections so that you can reduce violence in the future. I also want to note that these events came out of a survey given to the community early in two thousand and twenty-one, where they wanted more events. They wanted more safe, fun places to hang out in Antioch and not necessarily have to go to Brentwater to Concord. They wanted places that they can be here with their friends that were free and were safe. When the Youth Services Division was first established, we knew we needed a strong foundation for these wonderful meetings. So we sat down, and we created six pillars that would shape our work. In brief, they're personal growth, academic support, mentorship, social emotional wellness, civic engagement, and workforce development. These pillars ensure that our programs address the full range of needs that young people face. In two thousand and twenty-four, we allocated almost three hundred thousand dollars to eleven programs. In FY twenty-five, fourteen programs for three hundred and fifty-two thousand, which is where we're currently at. And our goal is to fund almost eighteen to twenty programs in FY twenty-six for four hundred thousand dollars. We currently have eight hundred and twenty-five unduplicated participants in these classes, and this is just a snapshot of the tutoring, the performing arts and theater, the camps. I also want to make reference to the fact that this year, when we fund these organizations, they're done via RFP. They're published, we receive them, they're analyzed and reviewed and scored. This year, we received six point seven million in requests for funding. We only have three hundred and fifty thousand for this year, and we were able to do some of these. Looking ahead, we hope to fund the eighteen to twenty programs. The reality is that while our team is strong and made up of two full-timers and two young adult interns, and we have made incredible strides, we cannot do it alone. That's why partnerships are key. Through these partnerships, again, snapshot, we've been able to offer a wide variety of programs, from after-school and in-school support to enrichment activities during the summer, spring, and winter breaks. What better way to have your kid busy during the breaks for free? We funded performing arts and theater programs, barbering training, parenting workshops, and more. But one of the most impactful relationships we've built is with the Antioch Unified School District, or AUSD. This partnership has been essential, not just in helping us promote events and initiatives, but also in ensuring that our programs are strategic, responsive, and truly meets the needs of our youth. By working closely with AUSD, we've built, we've been able to align our efforts with what's happening in the schools, ensuring we're taking the best possible approach to engaging and supporting young people.
So another key signature program that was initially funded through ARPA alone and now has a grant source through the Youth Services Corps that we received five hundred thousand dollars for, is the Mayor's Apprenticeship Program, which is affectionately called the MAP, but is changing to another name. So this program was established because one of the key populations we aimed to support that we were missing was the transitional age youth, affectionately known as TAE, which are young adults aged eighteen to twenty-six, who often face significant barriers such as homelessness, being justice-involved, and aging out of foster care. This group is particularly difficult to engage and retain in programs, so sometimes we say the hard-to-reach and hard-to-keep. But to address those challenges, we created this program, which we are now presenting to council to consider changing to RISE, Ready, Inspired, Skilled, and Empowered, a workforce development program designed specifically for these young adults who have been part of any system of care. We're looking to, through this program, provide young adults with the opportunity to develop life and job skills while supporting their long-term success. We're also looking to build a talent pipeline for the city, allowing these young adults to gain hands-on experience while contributing to their community. Many times, these young adults come into the workforce, and we figure out, oh, we can give you, we can give you. But what we don't realize is the skills and the characteristics that they bring to us, and it has been demonstrated through this Mayor's Apprenticeship Program in partnership with Public Works. There were strong relationships that were forged and bonded, and it was a reciprocity between the department and those young adults. Some of the program goals were to ensure that each participant acquired a minimum of two new skills relevant to workforce development, assisting participants in building a professional resume to support for future employment. It was to hire ten participants per cohort to participate in the hands-on training within city department. And I worked closely with Public Works. Thank you, Scott Bunting and Carlos Cepeda, so much... To launch the program's first two cohorts. And while there were many lessons learned, I'm sure Scott and Carlos would love to chat with you outside, there were also significant successes, so much so that we are able to continue the program and expand it to two more cohorts, possibly five, and I'll allow Montserrat to share more details about it. Hi. As Tasha mentioned, a major milestone for this program was when I was able to secure five hundred and forty thousand for California Volunteers Youth Service Corps. There are some members that I saw, and they're wearing their cool burgundy t-shirts. This funding now supports Cohort Three and Four. The remaining two hundred and seventeen thousand for ARPA was awarded to Rubicon this past year to finish out Cohort Two and Three to continue their Critical Support Services. The program has already seen major successes. Seventeen out of the twenty participants in the last cohort completed the programs. That's out of one and two. So as you can see there, it says twenty-nine participants, because currently nine are in progress. So out of the twenty, seventeen completed the program. Eleven participants secured employment, many using the skills that they learned within Public Works. As we move forward, California Volunteers Youth Service Corps...
California Volunteers Youth Service Corps is funding 100% of this program through December 2026. I'm currently in the application stage for the next funding cycle, which will fund us through December 2027. One key improvement for Cohorts 3 and 4 has been expanding partnerships to include Monument Impact, Animal Services, and Tri Delta Transit, allowing participants to explore a wider range of career pathways. Currently, the Youth Service Corps is funding MAP through December 2026, but I have high hopes in the next round that we'll get it. Thanks. Beyond the MAP, hopefully, RISE, we are also pursuing additional funding sources to expand our division's impact. This includes the Employment Social Enterprise, which I'm applying for, for $1 million. The funder is the Employment Development Department, which will allow us to place a lot of our young people, ages 18 to 26, in different community-based organizations. Explore the Coast Overnight, which is something I'm really excited about. It's for $500,000, and Coastal Conservancy is funding, and it allows our youth to stay overnight at the coast, who mostly have never really been to the coast. So I think it would be an awesome experience for many of our Antioch youth. These funding opportunities will allow us to continue growing and enhancing programs that will provide meaningful career exposure and leadership development for our Antioch youth. And here we have some of our metrics and outcome. I want to go, I know you see it, but I'm going to walk you through some of the key ones. We currently have 1,850-plus youth engaged. That is unduplicated numbers. On top of that, the data collection, which is probably the most expansive and most difficult thing to do, is done during post-event surveys, QR codes for Survey Monkey, email, and employment status check-ins. We have 87% program completion rate in the programs. That means most of our workforce development programs. We have 90% demonstrated measurable skill improvement. 85% showed academic or personal growth. And this is for youth ages 12 and young adults aged 18 to 26. 88% have secured internships, apprentices, or jobs placements within six months. That means after Build, or after our Spring Board, or after our social media internship, that these youth have gotten another placement within six months of those programs. 95% of planned mentorship hours, training modules, and community projects successfully completed. And 92% of participants reported high satisfaction. 95% of program goals met. Thank you.
I have one more team member that I would like to welcome up. Julie Haswadoich. I never say that right, Julie. Sorry. But Julie will review the Environment Sustainability and Resiliency piece. While she's coming to the microphone, Julie is not only an extremely skilled and experienced colleague, but she is also extremely passionate about our environment. Our city's functions and its impact on the environment has kept us in state compliance. And it has also kept me learning and growing and guessing at which trash receptacle to properly dispose of my trash. So thank you, Julie.
It's not all trash, Tasha.
Oh, yeah. Learning.
All right, can I get the slides up? And then I have to figure out, where do I point this? Thanks. Okay, there you go. Oh, I think I... There we go. So the Environmental Resources Division is now the Environmental Sustainability and Resilience Division in our new department. And overall, the last two years, or the last budget, this current budget cycle, we have been busy implementing SB 1383, which is that lovely food waste program that is really, really important and something that everybody can do to help protect the climate. However, it's a lot of work. One of the big things that happened in 2024 was we finalized our amendment to bring the Organics Program to our residential service. And with that, CalRecycle has made available some funding to help. So we secured $307,000 for implementation of SB 1383. That money is going to a variety of things. One being the current contract for county environmental health to provide our inspection services for the food recovery aspect of SB 1383. And then also what we're doing right now, and you'll see in the next bullet point, is we've launched a Resource Recovery Ambassador Program. This program started as a volunteer engagement program during the sesquicentennial, and it was put together by our Civic Spark Fellow at the time, Dawn Schultz Allen. She is now our full-time analyst as of last month. And we are now launching it through our SB 1383 implementation funds. It's a stipend program for residents or people that basically live, work, and play in the city of Antioch. So if you're a resident, you're covered. If you work for an agent or an organization within the city, you can also get the stipend for attending. Or if you represent or work with an organization as a volunteer. We call volunteering playing around here. So that program is basically a four-hour training that trains the community on the proper three-sort recycling methods and the science behind a lot of the recycling, as well as some practice in engaging the community at the three-sort bins at public events. We just completed our first cohort, so to speak, and we had nine people complete it, and eight people get the $75, choose to apply for the $75 stipend. We have another Resource Recovery Ambassador Training Program happening at the end of this month. And then we'll do another one in the summer, or at the end of the summer, and another one next year. And that'll close out the grant with that staff. We're hoping, with those trained folks, we're hoping that they train their communities. And then it wasn't just about SB 1383. We also updated our Climate Action and Resilience Plan for the 2025 to 2030 timeframe. This is tied to the five-year consolidated plan for CDBG funding, and I'll get into that more in the next slide. So for 2026 and 2027, we hope to continue to implement our Resource Recovery Ambassador Program and work with our Housing Division to promote the opportunity for CDBG funding grants to implement the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. We also plan to take on, or bring on to payroll for part-time, for special events, especially special events that the city is operating, our Resource Recovery Ambassadors, so that they will be able to go out into the events. Because while I'm not just one person anymore, I now have another full-time person, there's a lot of events, and we can't be everywhere all at once. I've been trying for a really long time. And we're really, really hoping to focus on community outreach and engagement at in-person events. For those of you that have been around for a while, that was my goal in the 2020 to 2025 Climate Action and Resilience Plan, but COVID really put a roadblock on that one. What I'd also like to say is if you look at your budget, at your packets, in Attachment C of the Staff Report, you'll see that the Solid Waste Fund is on page 16 of that. And then also, and that fund is what the, like, for instance, the CalRecycle grant comes from. That's also where our franchise fee, a portion of the franchise fee goes. And that is what our Solid Waste Fund is funded for. You will notice that while I mentioned that there's two full-time employees, and what was alluded to earlier is that the, myself, I am the Environmental Resources Coordinator. My classification is Admin Analyst 3, so we have two analysts in the division. And those are separated, those are paid for not just out of solid waste, but out of water and sewer as well. And so it's spread out on that one. That's why there's not even a whole body in there. So that being said, the other fund that you have is currently in our Capital Improvement Budget. It is on page 19 of that Attachment C. And in there, we are asking for basically a very small amount of money to work on personnel so that we can continue to do community outreach events for our part-time staff, services, and supplies as we work to implement our CARP. One of our main focuses of implementing the Climate Action and Resilience Plan right now is really focusing on our lower-income and underserved residents, especially those that are more impacted by air quality. And then also working to lower folks' energy or utility burden. So working on energy efficiency and assistance in bringing their indoor air quality into better standard with installation and stuff like that. We are hopeful that things will right themselves and that our Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant through the Department of Energy will be finalized, because we've been working on that for over a year now. And the contract has been put on hold. Overall, that's about, I will be happy to answer any questions when we get back, but that's the little bit on this, Environmental Resources.
That concludes our PowerPoint presentation. And before I turn it back over to you, Mayor Bernal, I just want to first thank the visionary Councilmember Torres Walker for all of your hard work in helping to establish this department and working towards the funding that set up so many of these amazing programs that we hear about tonight. And thank you also to Councilmember Wilson for all of your unwavering support for these programs, your questions, your connections. I really appreciate the effort and the support that we've received in the past. I'm looking forward to continued support through the new councilmembers and the new mayor in the seats. And we're happy to field any questions once the time comes. Thank you.
So there's one opportunity for public comment for both this budget and the police budget, but I think since it seems like a lot of the folks are here for this item, you can take public comment now. And just know that you'll be able to speak once tonight for public comment. Is that clear? No? Okay, well, then I'll go ahead and we'll go ahead if the councils wants to do that, or we can hear from PD and then do public comment once after.
I think the concern that people have is if they're here for both items and they only get to speak once, if they speak now, they don't get to speak again. I guess the real question is, how do you want to run the meeting, Mayor?
Well, my desire is to follow the public comment requirements, which is speaking one time and making sure that we honor that while making sure people have the opportunity to speak on both if they want to.
So if the idea is that people speak once, should we just move on to the police budget so everybody can speak? Or do we just?
I know, what's the council's pleasure?
If you speak now, you only speak once, you don't speak anymore throughout the meeting if you speak now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we just have a show of hands? Who would like to speak on this particular department's budget? Please raise your hand. And who would like to speak on the Police Department budget? So I have no problem taking comments for this budget and comments for the second.
Yeah, is that okay with the council? Okay, so we will go ahead and open this up for public comment. I would ask everybody here to please, we have three minutes per comment. Ask if you could please not repeat comments, if that's possible. And also know that we would like for you to refrain from any type of profanity when you're up there speaking. And also, please allow folks that are speaking to be able to have the respect of having you all listen to them while they're speaking so that we can as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just point of order.
Yes.
We, as a council, have not gone over the financial considerations that we have. I'm assuming Ms. Johnson and Ms. Scott would want to...
Yes, we haven't gone over the budget sheets. So we can do that.
I think maybe some members of the public, after we ask our questions, may have a response for us.
Certainly, we can go over the budget now.
Yeah, so in Attachment C of the Staff Report, which I'll get up on the screen, that's the individual budget sheets for the Public Safety and Community Resources Department, just so you can see the numbers. Okay, so if we can get that on the screen.
Ms. Merchant? Are you going to go page by page?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect. So this is the budget, the actual budget worksheets as they stand right now for the Public Safety and Community Resources budget. And to keep in mind, this is more than just a general fund. This also includes the Solid Waste Fund, which is the Environmental Resources and Resiliency, the CDBG, as well as the Housing Successor Fund. So on this first page of the attachment, I've put some categories that are explained in the budget worksheets, just so you can see what's actually in those. Personnel, which is pretty explanatory. The materials and supplies, which are the office and operating supplies. Contracts. Computer, phone maintenance and replacement, which is internal services of the city to pay for computer and phone services. Vehicle maintenance and replacement. That's for if your department has fleet, you're paying to pay for our fleet division as well as replacement costs, which I've mentioned, the replacement piece is removed from these budgets in fiscal year '26 and '27. Business expenses, which include training, conferences, and memberships. Utilities, which are electrics and gas charges. Furniture and equipment, which can be computer, software, vehicles, or other equipment needs. And then Internal Services, which is the cost allocation plan allocating servicing departments, among other funds of the city. So this is an organization chart of the Public Safety and Community Resources. Director Johnson already had this on her prior PowerPoint. But this is the overall, this page, for the general fund divisions only. So as you can see, we have the source of funds. In prior years, City Council allocated the Measure W 1% sales tax to the department. That's what was funding it. In '25, '26, and '26, '27, that shows zero, just because once we get through this budget process, City Council will have to determine how to allocate the Measure W 1% sales tax funds. And then we have it split between personnel and services and supplies. And as you can see, for the general fund portion in each fiscal year, 6.75 FTEs are funded. So the first division budget is the Youth Network Services. And as you can see, again, the variance for the sales tax. We've split the spending of funds between personnel, supplies, youth stipends, contracts, computer, the phone maintenance, and business expense. There's two FTEs funded out of this. And as a variance explanation, that the increase in part-time help and other benefit costs attributes to the increase in personnel in '25, '26 over '24, '25. Any questions on this sheet before I move on to the next one? So the next division budget is the Housing and Homelessness Division. Again, broken out with personnel, contracts, homeless services, where you can see the increase of 58% going up in '25, '26. That's increased core team funding, expanded shower, laundry, resource fair, and safe parking programs, as Director Johnson outlined in her PowerPoint presentation. There's one FTE funded out of this program. And the reason for the increase in personnel costs is there were salary savings, vacancy savings in '24, '25. In '25, '26, it should be a full year of funding for that position. So the next division is the Violence Intervention and Prevention. That number is increasing significantly in '25, '26, and '26, '27. The large increase from $276,000 for the revised budget up to the $1.9 is due to funding being included for the Angelo Quinto Crisis Response Team funding for the remainder of fiscal year '26, once the ARPA funds are exhausted. So that equates to the $1.7 million. And then our full year funding increasing to $2.475 million in '26, '27. So that is reflected in this budget. And then, of course, as council deliberates the budget process going forward, you know, this would be one of the programs to be discussed. Any questions on this budget? Okay, the next is the Community Engagement Budget. That is being folded into the Violence Intervention and Prevention. So we just have the '24, '25 closing that out. And then the budget that was existing will be rolled into the Violence Intervention and Prevention. And it also includes removing four community resource specialist positions. Those positions have never been created. They were initially funded when the department was created, but nothing has moved forward to actually create those positions and move forward with hiring. The next is the Public Safety and Community Resources Administration Budget. There's $1.75 FTEs in this division. The majority of cost is for personnel. The majority of cost is for personnel and then increase in part-time help in fiscal year '26 is causing the variance in the personnel. Next, we move on to the ERF Grant. The city was awarded approximately $6.8 million in state encampment resolution funds. Recently, Director Johnson did take something to City Council to approve allocation of those funds in coordination with the county. So, that's, this budget is being established to account for those use of funds and our collaboration with the county for the programs to be funded under this grant. Another grant program under this department is the California Volunteers Grant. The city received $540,000 approximately from the State of California California Volunteers to expand on the existing mayor's apprenticeship program. So, Director Johnson also did touch on this in her presentation. We have a '24, '25 number and a '25, '26 revised. This is just based on the current funding available. And of course, if we are awarded additional grant funds, we will definitely update the proposed '26, '27 numbers for any future grant opportunities that we're fortunate enough to receive. The next grant is the CalVIP Grant. We received almost $1.8 million. This grant runs through December 31, 2025. As mentioned in the prior presentation, 50% of the Public Safety Manager and Community Engagement Coordinator are funded through this grant. So, that, the fiscal year '27 number is just included on there to continue the 50% funding of the salaries in assumption of receiving the grant. But again, once we know if we're successful in the grant, those numbers will be revised, particularly if more than, if the grant funds more than 50% of the positions. And then that would also pull the burden off the general fund for those positions. The next fund is the PLHA Grant, which is funded through state permanent local housing allocation funds. This falls under the purview of essentially our Community Development Block Grant and housing piece of this department, currently administered by our excellent consultant, Teresa House. And so, we've received the money in advance. This funding on here is included based on what's been awarded of those funds and we should continue to receive funds for the next two fiscal years. The next is the Community Development Block Grant Fund. The monies for '25, '26 and '26, '27 are based on estimated funding allocations to be received and what we know, estimated expenditures to sub recipients and other programs. Of course, the actual sub recipients will be decided once the CDBG Subcommittee finishes meeting and determining who will receive those allocations. But this is a means to get those projected numbers in the budget so that we have the budgets available to award the monies to those sub recipients. The next budget being established, this is new for this fiscal year, is the Community Benefit Program Fund. The city is a partner in an affordable housing tax credit bond transaction that requires the partner entity to provide the city with an annual payment to benefit lower-income community. So, this fund was established to account for that annual payment. It's not very much that we receive every year. So, no funding has been allocated that services and supplies is for our banking expenditures that we have. But once we accumulate enough money to make an impactful program, the department will be, you know, expanding this budget to make a meaningful difference with these funds. The next budget is the one Ms. Hozwodowicz was talking about, the Solid Waste Reduction Fund, which also operates as the Environmental Sustainability and Resilience Division under the department. You can see the revenue sources, investment income revenue from other agencies. There are several grant funding sources from the state that this department receives. And then franchise fees as a portion of the garbage franchise fees we receive from Allied/RepUBLIC Services. So, it's personnel services and supplies. 0.78 of the positions are funded out of this fund, as was mentioned in the prior presentation. The positions are split among water and sewer as well. So, the first division within this fund is the Used Oil Division. So, there's grant funding received in there that's used for programs. The next division is actually called the Solid Waste Reduction Division. This counts for the portion of franchise fees allocated to pay for programs. The expenditure are increasing in fiscal year '27 due to a consultant contract for a new RFP for garbage franchise and an increase in the shared program costs with Delta Dabble for Household Hazardous Waste Program. This next budget worksheet is just a snapshot. It's one division of the Capital Improvement, Capital Projects Fund. This is the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Division, also that Ms. Hozwodowicz also mentioned, that a funding source will be needed to continue the CARP implementation. We previously had PG&E rebate funds from Honeywell retrofit project that was used to fund this division. As mentioned on the note on this worksheet, there's, after the end of this fiscal year, there'll only be about $5,500 left. So, there will be a shortfall in '25, '26 of about $53,000 to continue CARP implementation. And then we would need another $58,000 in funds from Source to continue CARP implementation. The next budget worksheet is the CDBG Revolving Loan Fund. We were required many years ago to set up a separate fund for loan repayments received from housing loans from, provided by CDBG. It's no longer called an RLF or revolving loan fund, but referred to as program income when the funds return to Source and then it gets spent on other CDBG programs. So, that ending balance in there, although it says, for example, $5.9 million in '24, '25, that's not the actual amount of CDBG funds that are in there. That accounts for the outstanding loans that the CDBG fund actually has. So, it's not money that's available, that's loans receivable that are due to the city for housing program loans. This next group of funds is the city is a receiver of several settlement streams from the opioid settlement with pharmaceutical distributors. So, we are required to account for these in their own bucket of money coming in and we do have to report to an agency the use of the funds. Expenditures must be tied to ending, reducing or lessening the effects of the opioid epidemic, including prevention, intervention, harm reduction and treatment and recovery services. So, the distributor fund is one stream of money coming in where it's estimated that we'll be receiving $22,000 under that settlement in each year. And so, the Public Safety and Community Resources Department has pegged that to use for programs that meet the expenditure criteria. Another fund under the same settlement is the Janssen Pharmaceutical Settlement Funds. The next fund is the Opioid Settlement Abatement II Trust Fund. That one has a little bit of less funding sources available, but at this time, no program has been set. That'll be determined as the department finds programs to spend this money on. The next one is the Opioid Settlement Abatement Fund. This one has a little bit more money to spend, so we're programming $131,000 each year to spend for these purposes. The final opioid settlement fund is the McKinsey Settlement Fund from McKinsey &amp; Company. And that one is another smaller stream of about, just over $5,000 that the department will be spending on programs to meet the expenditure requirements. And the final budget worksheet for this department is the Housing Fund. This is the former low and moderate income housing fund of the former Antioch Development Agency. When redevelopment agencies were abolished, the city elected to become the Housing Successor Fund. So, this pays for low and moderate income housing activities. Again, this balance, the $14.5 million at the end of '24, '25, that is actually not cash. That is former redevelopment loans that the city has as a receivable due to them. So, there is a lot less, and the majority of this, probably about $12 million, $13 million is actual loans due to the city. So, we have to show it in the fund balance. So, that concludes the budget worksheets. With that, I can turn it over for questions and whatever, if you want to start taking public comments.
Yes. So, Ms. Merchant, if we can go back to page four.
Yes.
So, on page four, this is somewhat of an overview. So, from '24, '25, the budget is 2.4 million. The following year goes to 4.4 and then the following year after that, year 2027, it goes to 5.2. So, it's more than double the budget within a two-year period of time. And some of the discussion we've heard today, it appears to me that we're waiting for answers with regards to the application of grants and things of that sort. Is that right?
That is correct, but the majority of the increase in fiscal year '25, '26 and then '26, '27 is folding in the care team into the general fund because currently it is paid with American Rescue Plan Act funds. So, when those funds expire in October 2025, we've moved the expenditure for that into this budget. So, that, you know, 1.75 is added in '25, '26 and then that number goes up to the 2.4 in '26, '27. So, that is the majority of the increase. The other grants that Director Johnson was referencing, one is the CalVIP Grant. So, that's in a separate fund, for example. So, it's really the care team, the Angel Quinto Crisis Response Team that is attributable to the large increase over the next two fiscal years.
So, I'm trying to frame the policy question for the council. So, are we saying that from the 2.4 to 5.2, that's all general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just a quick clarifying question. And maybe I missed it and I thought I would see it under the solid waste funds. Doesn't this department also get funding from MPDES?
There is a small portion of the salaries that get paid out of the MPDES fund, but nothing flows directly from the MPDES fund into the solid waste fund and it's only a portion of the salaries. I believe it's only like 17%. It's a very small percentage.
Okay. Just FYI, and this is more for, Director Johnson had a conversation with Congressman Gere Mindy. This is, MPDES is his kind of baby. I would definitely reach out to his staff because I believe there's funding possibility that can help you and your department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The MPDES, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, that's a permit. And if everybody who has property in City of Antioch looks, it says Stone Water Utility Charge. That's what they're talking about. That is what the MPDES fee is.
But yes, reach out to that office. Thank you.
Just a quick question on page 14 under CDBG Fund, Community Development Block Grant. It shows revenue at 1.6 million this year and then it goes down to 9.47 next year and then it goes down to 3.26 the following year. What's the reason for that drastic reduction?
Well, the 1.6, so what happened, if you notice in '23, '24, the amount was 482. So, there's a rollover of funds. So, that rolled into '25, '26. And then 24, '25, '25, '26 are really just estimates at this point until we get the actual amount of CDBG funding. And in '26, '27, we only, you know, estimated some of the personnel and services and supplies numbers and we matched the revenue just to agree with what we know right now. So, these numbers, as I stated before, once the CDBG Subcommittee meets and then we have the actual funding allocations from CDBG, they'll be revised at that time.
Okay, because to the extent we're going from 1.6 to 300,000, that's going to significantly impact those many programs that are being funded through the CDBG.
We were in the CDBG Committee informed by Terry House that the challenge with the projections is all the, I don't even know what to call it, happening at the national level right now. And so, we would have already known, you know, how much HUD funds were going to be coming to the city. We would already know that information. We would know how much we have to spend. In previous years, when myself and Councilmember Barbannical were on the committee, we knew the money was coming, it was here and it could be expensed. But with this new administration, we don't even know, one, if the funds are going to come, or two, how much is going to come, if any at all. And so, I think that's where some of like the uncertainty that myself and Mayor Protem Rocha is going to have to be dealing with. And hopefully, we'll get an update as a city soon as to if those funds are coming and to what amount.
Okay, thank you. And then, Dawn, last question, page 16, under the Solid Waste Fund. So, the franchise fee went from 160 in '23 up to 320 this year and is proposed to go to 400. Is that, where is that franchise fee money currently going that's being added to this budget?
So, the franchise fee, and I don't know, Mayor, if you remember this from your time, when it was set up, it was set to be split between the Street Impact Fund, the general fund and the solid waste fund. And there was a percentage formula. When the city hit its economic downturn in 2008, the amount that was allocated to solid waste was then allocated to the general fund instead. So, it was reduced down to $160,000. As the solid waste fund has expanded, it needed additional revenue sources and of course, the general fund had built back up. So, that amount was doubled in '23, '24, starting to increase it to $320,000. And now that the second administrative analyst has finally been hired and going to be started, there was a need to increase that allocation to the solid waste fund again to continue to fund the program in its entirety. So, that's why it was increased from 320 to 400. So, what that does is reduces the general fund portion of the Street Impact.
Got it, thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, I think we can open it up to public comment, please. I'm clerk.
First speaker is going to be Christina Pedrosa, followed by Maddox Pedrosa.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am a parent in this community and I have three amazing children that are part of the Antioch Council of Teens. And with this program, I have not only seen some of these teens do amazing things, I have witnessed the excitement and the drive that my children have to be a part of this program. Following these wonderful three teens that I have, I have six other children coming right behind them. And they see their older siblings being a part cleaning up their community, outreach into their peers, being in the leadership program in their schools, receiving different awards and coming up and being a part of their community. If we take away funding from these communities and these children, the word bored would be an understatement. When our children are bored, this is when it causes conflict within our communities. You talk about safety, you talk about engagement. This is programs that will provide that. You want to protect our environment, our city and help our police, we'll start with our youth. When our youth are on the right path, it brings down the process of having so much police involvement with our youth. It could be different and we can be different, but how do we start those differences? By building up our community. We're not here just to serve each other, we are here to serve them. Give them the tools, give them the guidance, give them the pathway. Having programs that Ms. Johnson's have talked about is those pathways and those resources that we have. Again, don't allow our teens to be bored. Engage them. Help us. Thank you.
Next we have is Maddox and after Maddox will be Samantha Pedrosa.
Hi, my name is Maddox and I've been part of the Antioch Council of Teens for about three years. And speaking from experience, I've learned a lot about social skills and I've learned to make relationships with not only the people in ACT, but also people like outside, like school, public. but also people like outside, like school, public. And so I've been, on top of that, I've been given a lot of opportunities for you, leadership roles and other programs, like the Yoc internship, to tutor people. And if I had to pick a favorite part of being part of ACT, I would say it's probably the civic engagement that our events bring to people. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Samantha, after Samantha will be Nico Bradshaw.
Hello, my name is Samantha Pedrosa Lindsay. I am thirteen years old. I am going to PARC. I have been in ACT for about two years, and ACT has taught me so much, especially leadership. Because of ACT, I got invited to be a part of my school leadership. And it, yeah, leadership is a lot of responsibility and organization. ACT has that all. They teach me so much about the community, how to organize stuff, how you could support your community service, how you clean up, how we clean up the creek. That was a big step. We put garbage cans, we picked up the garbage, and we put in benches. It showed me how to respect my community and how I could change this community very much. It's also taught me my, what I want to become for a, what my career is. I want to become a surgeon, and I'm going to work in the medical field. Thank you. I plan to go to Dozier, because this is a school that could teach me more, and it could help the community around us. I could become someone who helps different types of people with what they need, what they want, and it's going to help the community. ACT has taught me that I could believe in myself, and I could change this community so much. And yeah, that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nico Bradshaw, after Nico will be Brianna Robinson.
Hello, everyone. My name's Nico, and I want to talk about the impact of ACT. I started ACT around like two years ago, and once, when I started getting into it, I think it really impacted. It helped me grow skills. It helped me socialize, helped me get out more. And I think this is a program that we should really decide to keep, especially for the teens, because it'll help them not only with skills in life, but also to have fun and to make, have, make fun for other younger kids in the City of Antioch as well. So this is why I think it's an important program to keep, so we can have Antioch just have fun, so nobody don't have to worry about any danger. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Brianna Robinson, after Brianna is going to be Bruce Kuhn with Emma Canales.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Brianna Robinson. I'm the President and CEO of Opportunity Junction. We are a nonprofit organization that has been proudly serving the Antioch community for twenty-five years. At Opportunity Junction, we believe that everyone who works hard deserves the opportunity to succeed. And our mission is to help motivated Contra Costa County job seekers develop the skills and confidence to launch careers that lead to financial security. The City of Antioch has been a partner with our organization through the CDBG funds and through the youth funds. But with CDBG, since our founding, since we've opened our doors, we have served more than three thousand two hundred and fifty Antioch residents. Thanks to this partnership, we've been able to grow into an organization that runs three concurrent job training programs, preparing Antioch residents for careers in the administrative field and in healthcare fields. Our work is needed in this community. We know that there is a real fear of a slash and a burn in the CDBG funds. I see that concern projected in the funding of services that I, over the next two years. I want the council to know that we stand by, ready to partner for advocacy if there's any chance to tell our story in any way needed. At Opportunity Junction, we are part, we are proud to be part of the ecosystem that is the City of Antioch. One hundred percent of our trainees are low-income, as defined by HUD. Of the participants we serve, ninety-one percent face skills deficiencies that hinder their ability to succeed in the workforce. Forty percent have experienced trauma. Nearly twenty percent have a disability. Many have histories of domestic violence, addiction, long-term unemployment, barriers that make it even harder for them to secure stable, well-paying jobs. Many have not had the opportunity to succeed in a traditional educational system. Despite these challenges, our clients are resilient and committed to a better future. Our training programs are designed to address these barriers head-on, and our results speak for themselves. A quick story of Courtney, a young woman who is an Antioch resident. She joined our program about, she was twenty-two years old when she started, only ever having worked in fast food. She went through our nursing assistant training program and is now working in a skilled nursing facility. After her first five months working there, she had already received a raise, and she's still working there now. I urge the council to prioritize funding for programs like ours so that we and our nonprofit partners in this room can continue to make a meaningful difference in the lives of our city residents. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to the people of Antioch. Let's continue to invest in their future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce and Emma, followed by Mars.
Good evening, Council, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Bruce Kuhn, and if I may, I want to address a remark to Ms. Cabral, because we have not met yet. You sent a note to one of my colleagues, Ally Brown, about the importance of being here. And now that I've seen you in action, you can call us anytime. I mean, what a dynamo. But I'm here to speak in support of the Youth Services Program and what you're accomplishing here. This program obviously increases, initiates and manages so much important, things that are important to the vitality and health of Antioch. As I mentioned, my name is Bruce Kuhn. In a minute, I'm going to have Emma Mata Canales, who's an eleventh grade student at Deer Valley High School here in Antioch, speak. But first, I want to introduce the program that she and I both represent. It's called the Contra Costa Youth Journalism. And it began its second year, and we have three Antioch high schools in our program, three students in our program. This program trains high school students on how to report responsibly on their schools and their communities. They learn the importance of how our citizens need accurate and timely news and information to make informed decisions on public matters. You know, Emma said, "This is going to be my first city council meeting." And this is not just a classroom exercise. These reporters are coached by professional journalists, and their stories are published in mainstream Bay Area news outlets. They receive a one thousand dollar stipend for their work. When Emma and the other Antioch students and our twelve other Contra Costa youth began their training last summer, we told them, "You're performing a public service. No time in American history has it been more important that you help communities tell their story. Who better knows what is going on than members of that community themselves?" And so what did Emma go do? She went and reported on the Deer Valley Focalora Club and how Hispanic groups share their culture through dance and music. She wrote about how martial arts empowers youth. And when she did that story, she interviewed Antioch businesses, including living-proof martial arts and fitnesses. And last summer, she wrote about the Ojima Girls in Robotics Leadership Camp, which is offered by your Antioch United School District for middle and high school students, also known as Sea Stem Girl Camp. The project aims to inspire and encourage young black girls to learn more and pursue careers in science, technology, and mathematics. No one else is covering the stories. You're not going to get the San Francisco Chronicle out here, KCBS News. It's got to be done by your community, and it's their dedication and their willingness to learn. So in our next CCYJ program, we hope to increase the number of Antioch students with our discussions. And so Emma will tell you what it's like to cover her community. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Emma.
Thank you. Okay. Hi, my name is Emma, and I am one of the journalists, a part of the program. And I have changed so much as a result of this program. I have grown out of a shell that I used to be in. And not only did I get to involve myself more in my community, but I immigrated here. So coming into Antioch was a very new experience for me, as, as I immigrated here from Peru. And I never fully felt like I integrated into my community. And with these programs, I felt like I finally became a vital piece of my community, and I finally felt connected to everyone around me. Not only do I cover stories about Antioch, but I also feel like these stories are so vital and important to be shared. Not only do I get to appreciate the community around me by talking about stories that otherwise wouldn't have been covered, but I also feel, and I have been told this before, that I, that work I have written and the stories that I have written about have impacted lives. People thank me for sharing the opportunities that they otherwise wouldn't have been aware of. And honestly, writing through these things show, help me just document what is happening in the present, but also help me and other students who are part of the journalism program to think about the future and how we can make things better. And I think these programs really serve our public to make our futures better. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mars, followed by Rika Davis Sherard.
I hope all is well with everyone. How you doing? All right. Wrote a little bit of something. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I go by Mars, and I stand before you as a young African-American man facing one of life's greatest challenges, being homeless while living with stage-two heart failure. It is not just my story. It affects the experiences of many in our community who feel unheard and unseen. I may not look like the face of hardship, but my reality is one that is all too common. I've experienced the cold nights without a shelter and the uncertainty of where my next meal will come from. But more than that, I face the struggle of managing a serious health condition without the stability and support that so many take for granted. This is more than a personal struggle. It is a call for our community to come together. We need affordable housing, accessible healthcare, and supportive services to help individuals like me regain our footing. We need more resources to tackle the growing issues of homelessness, particularly for those facing health challenges. I urge you all to listen to the stories of those affected by homelessness and health issues, stories like mine, and to advocate for initiatives that not only address immediate needs, but also create lasting change. Everyone deserves a safe place to call home and a chance to live a healthy life. Mayor, council members, and community members, I ask for your compassion and action together, and we can build a community where everyone, where every individual has the opportunity to thrive, not just survive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mars.
Rika Davis Sherard, followed by Karen Abbey.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rika Davis Sheard, and I'd just like to thank you, Mars, for your words. And before I get started, I just want to say to this council and this, and this staff, but mainly to the council and you, Mayor, if you want people to participate in these budget meetings, an hour, an hour and forty minutes into the meeting, with lots of very high-level nuanced numbers that we already had in our, in our packet, isn't something that we all want to sit through. We have families. We have been up. We have been at work. There's a lot of vulnerable people in this crowd, including children, and some of my shower guests, many of which have left, that we're here to support and to say something. So if you do want someone to, people, the community as a whole, to participate, I would urge you to consider, reconsider how you, how you shape these meetings. Because no one wants to sit through a lot of high-level things. We already can see that in the packet. Those are questions that you all have, and have the time to ask those questions. We get to make the comments on things we already know that we think is important. So I thank you for listening. So, hey, guys, my name is Rika Davis Sheard, and I'm the founder and executive of Share Community. As you all know, we provide showers for the unhoused. Many of them are in this room. They may not look unhoused to you, because they've had a shower. They have clean clothes. They have clean socks, new socks, new underwear, shoes. I don't think that people quite understand that it's not just a shower that Share Community provides. Share Community provides a place for people to belong, where there's nowhere else in the city that they can go and not be asked to leave. There's nowhere else in the city that they can come and get gently-used clothing, new socks and underwear, because I don't want used socks and underwear, so I pass out new ones. I have, we have shoes. We also do breakfast, coffee. Healthcare for the homeless is onsite, in addition to the laundry vouchers that the city so graciously pays for. But on top of all of those things, we have Core onsite, every single service that we provide. We also provide linkages to resources, whether it be reentry, housing, mental health, physical health. So it, we have created the hub that does not exist in East County. As we know, East County is lacking severely on services and anywhere for someone to come into and to actually get services. It's not just a shower. It's a place to belong. We're in absolutely nowhere in the city for people to belong, which is a high need for, for all of us, but specifically vulnerable populations. Most of the people that come to our shower services are in need of more than, more than what we can offer them, unfortunately. But we are a place in between. It is extraordinarily difficult for shower services and services like mine to garner funding, because we are not a housing solution. People want to fund housing solutions, but in the meantime, people still need services. If you do not put a bandage or a Band-Aid on a bleeding wound, people will bleed out and die, and they have. So I thank you for considering continuing to fund our services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Abbey, followed by Aristo Ruiz.
Hi, I'm Karen Abbey, and I am here for the Share Showers. I was, if somebody had told me I was going to end up homeless in my later part of my life, I wouldn't have believed it. So I was out here in Antioch for over three and a half years homeless. And so when the Share Showers showed up to the community outreach program on East Eighteenth, I was the first person to test the showers out. I, being homeless is a struggle, and then you're trying to look for work. It was a safe place to be able to go. They made you, I mean, they just poured out the love to you. And I like to see them supported. I was able to have a job interview, which I am a county employee. I work for Contra Costa Regional Medical Center in the Diagnostic and Imaging Department. During my homeless time, if I hadn't had the shower available and they got me interview clothes, I would have had to pass up a great opportunity. And I love my job. I've been there over two and a half years. So I was, I hope that you take into some of this consideration for that program and fund them, or whatever it takes, because there's a lot of opportunities people do pass up when they don't have the availability of the resources out here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Aristo, followed by Paulette Perez.
Good evening. I'm here to represent our RTH Tutoring Center. I mean, it has been a life changer for my daughter. She's, she's eleven. And she has, getting, being helped a lot, because with her homework. She was behind, and our RTH made a difference in her life. So if, if, if there's any way like to, you know, fund this, this, I guess you could say, Tutoring Center, it would be awesome, because it's helping a lot of kids, you know, staying on, getting their grades up. And I, I seen it, because I've been there since day one, since, you know, since COVID. I've been there since they started doing all this. I seen the change, and I seen a And I seen a lot of change in, a lot of kids that they were behind on their grades. Some kids used to bring stacks of homework because they were behind. And our RTH, you know, making a difference in their life. So I would, you know, plead to, if you guys, is there anything you guys could do just to fund this, our RTH and keep it going? You know, keeping kids out of streets. You're keeping kids busy on their homework and staying, staying off their electronics for a change. And so this is very, very important for the, for the community because we've been teaching a lot, a lot of kids on, on this occasion. So I just want to say, you know, that reconsider and have us, you know, on your mind and, and thank you.
Thank you.
Paulette, followed by Sandro Trujillo.
Hello, council members, directors, community. Thank you so much for being here. I appreciate your time. My name is Paulette and I'm representing our RTH Tutoring under Youth Services with Montserrat Cabral. I've worked with our RTH and I'm coordinator of our second tutoring program. I've worked with this organization for about, I want to say, four years. And I thank Margie and Sandro for providing this opportunity for me. It's definitely helped me. We started with a couple foldable chairs, foldable tables, and a couple workbooks that were donated, gently-used. And we helped students here, we helped students there. Responsibility started to trickle in towards, in my direction. And soon our numbers started to double in size. And we had moved our older students to the Nick Rodriguez Community Center. The Nick Rodriguez Community Center is a cultural center that promotes community and cohesiveness with our community. We are happy and grateful to be in that building where we can help students flourish in their, in what they need. Nick Rodriguez was an athlete at Antioch High School in the 1940s. So we have also student athletes in our program, which, you know, in high school and Antioch High, all over our Antioch community. And we want to push them towards higher education. And if higher education isn't their goal, we want to push them towards their, their passions, so that way they can flourish and have a stability in whatever they do. We want to continue working with them and making a change for all students in the future. And we want to push forward with their goals, like I said, and their passions. So thank you for your time and please invest in the students' futures all across our, our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandro, followed by Allison Norris.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor, City Council Members, for your time. My name is Sandro Trujillo. I'm a director at our RTH Learning Centers and I'm just very excited to be here and talk to you guys about what an impact this, this service does to our community. And as you know, some of our students, parents, and some of our tutors, you know, have shared. So I'll let you know, you know, at our RTH, we believe strong youth comes from strong families. And strong families build a strong community. Through free tutoring, mentorship, and life skills training, we help young people succeed, not just in school, but in life. We support families by providing a safe, empowering space where kids can grow confidence and purpose. But we go beyond education. We teach our youth the importance of giving back. Through empowerment seminars and community events, we encourage them to serve within their city, whether it's volunteering, participating in local projects, or our upcoming visit to the Antioch Animal Shelter. Our RTH instills pride, compassion, and responsibility in the next generation. So our impact is clear. When youth and families thrive, Antioch thrives. But we can't do this alone. We need your continued support to keep these vital programs going. By investing in our RTH, you are investing in a brighter, stronger future for our city. So before, you know, I go on and, and I finish, you know, we would like to, you know, our, our friends and families of our RTH would like to show some love. So our RTH family, you know, stand up, wave, make some noise, and say hi to our mayor and our city council members. You know, and, and thank you so much for pushing through, guys. You know, I know they're tired. But, you know, these, these are the future leaders of Antioch, full of energy, passion, and ready to make a difference. So again, thank you so much for your so valued and appreciated support, you know, through these, these years. And thank you so much for your time. Have a blessed night.
Thank you.
Allison, followed by Leanne Larono.
Hi, my name is Allison Norris of Snug as a Bug Bags. And I truly feel humbled to be in the presence of so many wonderful people and, and your story and the Contra Costa Youth Council of Journalism. So I want to speak on behalf of ACT. I was very privileged to spend several sessions and hours with these wonderful teenagers, making blankets and packing bags for teenagers in their community. I was very humbled when I first came. I shared what we did. I shared the needs of foster youth, of homeless youth, families in crisis. And these teenagers were so responsive to me. We shared a meal together and it, I'm just saying, it was very humbling for me to be accepted and to be so warmly accepted. With their director and their interns, they had a vote, wanting to know, a vote whether they wanted to participate, and they voted yes. We made, sat on the floor together and we made fifteen very large Thai fleece blankets. We packed fifteen bags full of toiletries and socks, school supplies, fidget items. They wrote handwritten notes. We had an assembly line going. They voted for where they wanted the bags to go. They went to the Family Justice Center. They were very keyed into domestic violence and teens experiencing them. And I just got to share some of their stories, like this young man that spoke, I know of his love for basketball. I heard about SAT scores, prom dates. It, it just, to me, it was humbling. And I ask, so many of us volunteers are older adults like myself, forty and plus. But, and we keep saying that we want our kids to serve, to learn the spirit of volunteerism. But how are they going to do it unless we provide them the opportunity? And that's what ACT does. And in the future, they were so thrilled with making the bags, they've agreed to help make the five hundred-plus quilts for our veterans for the stand-down. These are veterans that are unhoused and at risk. I'm looking forward to working with them in the future. Please support ACT. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leanne, followed by Scarlett McKenzie.
Hi, I'm Leanne. I'm the manager of customer service and marketing for Tri Delta Transit. Thank you, Mayor, and council members and board members, past and present, for us. Tri Delta Transit is an essential service in not only Antioch, but Eastern Contra Costa County. We have had the privilege of not only providing public transportation, but also working with environmental services and providing transportation to the unhoused resource fairs, among other things, working with veterans and so forth. This year, we were privileged to receive an intern. We have a social media intern as part of Montserrat's program. And the mutually beneficial program has allowed us to extend our communication reach, not only for our services in educating people about transportation, but also in educating people about all of the different events and programs that our services can take you to. So it's extending the reach of the services as well. So we're happy to also be teaching our intern a whole level of experience and exposing him not only to council meetings, he was here earlier, but also other outreach chamber events, other social events, town hall meetings for congressmen, things like that, things that didn't ever occur to him as part of the whole universe. So we're happy to have it be a mutually beneficial program. We're, we are public transportation, but we're not just operators. We have all levels of, of business, from customer service to IT, to accounting, to planning, all sorts of things. And we're hoping that you do fund the different programs because we're hoping to have maybe a few more interns for planning operations and facilities as well. And then we're hoping that eventually they can join us too in our forty-seven, forty-eight year history here. So thank you for all your support. And personally, I have an Antioch police officer son, so thank you for all that you do for police too. Thank you.
Scarlett, followed by Malevi.
Hello, Mayor, council members, and community. I'm here on behalf of the Antioch Council of Teens. I've been a member of ACT for about a year now. And I have to say, it's been an amazing place for me. I love it so much. I've gotten the opportunity to make friends and meet new people and also learn about and participate in so many volunteer activities that I've just loved being able to do and, you know, I'll be, will be able to help me get into colleges. I moved to Antioch when I was seven and I've gotten to love and appreciate that this town. I love living here and being able to give back to my community through ACT and of course, get free food every other week, has been an amazing experience. I think the most important thing that ACT does is the empowerment, honestly. I mean, I never thought that I could achieve all of the things that I've been able to achieve through ACT, all of the people that I've been able to help. And it's just been an amazing experience. I love being in ACT. Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize. I believe it's actually Malaya Kelly. And then after Malaya is going to be Ramon.
Good evening. My name is Malaya Kelly and I am a tenth grader at Deer Valley High School. I have been a part of the Antioch Council of Teens since 2023. I appreciate the leadership experiences and opportunities to contribute to my community through this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have two more minutes. So I am Malaya's mother. My name is Dr. Carol Dorm Kelly. I am speaking on behalf of an Antioch parent, living here with two teen children in Antioch Unified School District at Deer Valley. And just want to emphasize the importance. Malaya is definitely afraid of public speaking, but she's had opportunity through ACT to practice that. Today's practice. But she is a straight A student and this is the type of enrichment opportunity that allows her to be well-rounded, right? We know that academics don't predict, does not predict successful adulthood. So she absolutely needs, in addition to having an awesome mom, she also needs to have definitely opportunities to, to develop leadership skills and social skills. And so thank you, Malaya, for sharing your, she's, I told you, she nervous, for sharing her experience. I also would like to put my hat on as a CBO leader, so I'm also here representing Rubicon Programs. I am our president and CEO. Rubicon Programs has been around for fifty-one years in the East Bay and here in Antioch since 2012. We are currently a partner for the MAP program. And we do have some young people, young adults in the building, if they're still here. And we also have several staff in the building. And one thing I want to emphasize, Rubicon is invested and committed to providing economic mobility opportunities for adults disconnected from work and career and training. And so the opportunity to provide that for young adults ages eighteen to twenty-six was right along in alignment with our mission, but so necessary to be intentional about for that age group because we know they have unique barriers. We know where they are in, in their time of life. And Rubicon was ready to take on that challenge. And I also just want to say that in addition to the city investing in your CBOs, I'll use MAP as an example of Rubicon Programs as a CBO being able to leverage other resources. So when you think about investing in programs and partnering with your local CBOs, you're also stretching your money because we're able at Rubicon to leverage funds from the county as well as from our federal government to provide this, this actual program. So our staff that support MAP, there are so many resources that Rubicon can provide outside of the allocation that comes to the city MAP program. And I think that's important to note. Your money stretches when you partner with your CBOs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ramon, followed by Antonio Anderson.
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is Ramon Benori. First off, I want to say thank you for being here and caring about our community and for believing in our, in the power of opportunity. I've had the great privilege of working closely with some of the most determined, hard-working, inspiring young people in Antioch. Through the Mayor's Apprenticeship Program, tonight I want to share why this program is not just valuable, but it's essential. In a city as diverse and resilient as Antioch, our young people are the foundation for our future. But here's the reality, too many of them are shut out of the workforce and stuck in cycles of uncertainty or simply just not given the chance to go. That's where MAP steps in. Through hands-on job training, mentorship, workforce development, and MAP really removes a lot of barriers for people in the ages of eighteen to twenty-six. Not only are we giving them essential work skills, but we're helping them build careers, gain independence, and shape their futures. We know from experience and from the numbers that early workforce immersion works. Seventy-three percent of young adults who gain early workforce experience feel more prepared for their careers. Employers report, employers report that ninety-two percent of young workers with hands-on training demonstrate stronger leadership and teamwork and problems, problem-solving skills. Cities with strong youth employment programs see up to thirty percent drop in crime rates and higher economic mobility for young workers. But this isn't really just about statistics. It's about real people, real stories, and real change. I've had the privilege of mentoring incredible young people in the MAP program, individuals who came in uncertain but left with confidence, purpose, and a sense of new, and a sense of possibility. Like the young woman who started her apprenticeship in Antioch Animal Service and discovered a love for business and entrepreneurship, a passion she now is turning into a career. Or the young man who helped in Public Works, who helped in the Public Works Department and learning construction skills, learning construction skills that will one day help him build his own business. And then there's the participants who joined the Building Bridges Mentorship Program, using his talent as a fashion designer to inspire other young people to dream big. And I'm sorry, I'm stuttering. It's my first council meeting. What makes this, what makes MAP special isn't just the placements, it's the mentorship, it's the financial literacy training, the career coaching, and the community that comes with it. I tell every participant the same thing, this isn't the end, it's just the beginning, a stepping stone towards your future, because that's what MAP does. It opens doors, creates possibilities, and builds stepping stones. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ramon.
Antonio, followed by Rochelle.
Hi, my name is Antonio Anderson. I'm a participant, participant with the MAP program. And today I wrote a poem on the things that MAP helped me with throughout this journey. So here I go. He thanks, he thanks the MAP for guiding him through this wilderness, cutting down the trees in the way, allowing Phantom to expand his darkness into his future, into the forever, giving him the chance to build a sense of consistency and not repetition, allowing him to begin his evolution. MAP showed Phantom purpose by building the bridge to greatness. And yeah, that's the end of the poem. But I want to say MAP program really, really helped me with finding myself, like I was stuck in one position at, at one point. I was stuck in one position at one point. I was, had very repetitive days, wake up, eat, sleep. But they gave me purpose in teaching others, so thank you.
Rochelle, followed by Lauren Kadar.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rochelle Lyon. I'm sixteen, and I go to Dozier-Libby Medical High School as a junior. Today, thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to address you guys today. Today, I'd like to talk about why we should be funding service groups like ACT and RRTH. First of all, ACT has done so many incredible things for this community, such as the Clean the Creek Project, where my friends have already talked about this. And we also had an autism awareness drive, as well as food banks, and so many more opportunities, like making the blankets and donating them to people who need them. As well as for RRTH, I just joined it like a week ago, but like already I can see such a huge improvement. Like when I joined, it was a seminar to practice like networking and empowerment and teaching us how to like be adequate for like interviewing and what we should know. Just with that, we've practiced mock interviews, and we've practiced like having good mindsets, such as like if you fail something, try it again. These organizations set the footprint for becoming people who are leaders, becoming people who will set a footprint in their community. And I want to thank them, our leaders, for giving us that opportunity. And this is why they should be funded. They help us with giving us information to put on our transcripts for if we want to attend a good university. Like my goal is to hopefully one day become a cardiothoracic surgeon, which is a hard surgeon. And through these groups, I'm able to learn valuable steps and tools that I can use for the future, like in any aspect of my life. So I thank everyone. I thank you guys, and I hope we can keep funding these groups so that children from all ages can learn and grow as a community and change lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren, followed by Malaya.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lauren Kadar. I am one of the interns for the Youth Services Network. I've been there for almost a year. It will be a year in April. Before, I lived here. I grew up in Portland, Oregon. And my junior and senior year, I experienced homelessness. And doing this job, it's been really cool getting to see just the impact that this department has. And like I got to see Rica's work firsthand and see what she's doing, which is super inspirational. And I was at the celebration for the cohort for the Mayor Apprenticeship Program, which was super cool. And I co-facilitate each ACT meeting with Kimberly, Malavi, and Yos. And yeah, it's always just a blast. It's cool, you know, seeing them come up here. Dude, I know the first time I gave public comment, I was freaking out. I'm still a little shaky. But I know Tasha, she's seen me do a couple of public speaking. Every time, I always tell her, I was like freaking out. And yeah, that's how I got this job, because I was working with Hope Solutions as the resident empowerment program, and that's how I met Tasha and Montserrat. And I just asked them if like I could, you know, if I could work for them, and they gave me a shot. And I've been there ever since, so I've been enjoying it. That's it.
Thank you.
Malaya, followed by Cindy.
Hello, I am Malaya Cooper. I go to DV. I'm class of twenty-eight. And thank you, Mayor, and all the council members slash directors for being here. Thank you for even having my time in the first place. And I want to say here's how Antioch Council of Teens helped me. So we got new shirts, first of all. And number one, it helps me make new friends like Roxanne and them over there, and Malavi, Kimberly, Yash, and all of them help us through everything. And I would say I joined like November twenty-twenty-four, so I'm new, okay? And when I go there, it's like since I'm so busy, when I go to Antioch Council of Teens, I feel like a rush of excitement to go. Be fun, lift something off my shoulders to be relaxed while still helping people in need. And when it comes to Snug as a Bug Bags, when we made the thing around December, we help kids who didn't really have an opportunity to have opportunities to be, how put it, cuddle or warm per se in the sense of meaning. And then this tote bag right here, this is what we made when it was MLK and we helped elderly people. And basically, what happened was we made, you know, tie-dye tote bags. And it showed like the elderly that us young folks can also like, you know, while you're always on that phone, it helped showed us that we're actually doing something while also giving volunteer hours in this community to also forward, you know, the narrative for us teens. And then my fifth and sixth point was that when it comes to Antioch Council of Teens, we get new resources that we never had. All right, let me go hurry up real quickly. So when it comes to resources, I mean by, let's say, political economics, right? Boom, we can go take something very quickly of it and, you know, get internship here maybe, or communications with bridge builders, or get danced with my mom over there at R and Y Metropolis Dance. So it helps the community like see everything from our eyes while also trying to get into something new from every single place of appointment. And then what everybody else in Antioch Council of Teens, we also went to the lake near Little Cedar's piece of laundry way, where we helped the whole street be more clean because we've been having a problem when it comes to cleanliness in the past few years. So it shows that Antioch Council of Teens help in exponentially ways that I can ever describe. And that's why I got to go safer day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy, followed by Morelia.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cindy Alverenga, and I am very happy to see so many familiar faces here in support of youth services. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Antioch Council of Teens advisors and team, as well as the council members, for the opportunity to speak on such a pressing matter. Antioch Council of Teens is a program that has opened so many doors for so many people, including myself. I've had the honor to join an organization that has greeted me with open arms, and that is something so many teachers, so many teenagers lack, outside of school spaces willing to accommodate for everyone's individual circumstances. I have lived in both Antioch and El Salvador, so I have come to understand the nuance and intricacies of how detrimental gang violence can be. Pairing that with the lack of youth recreational centers, youth spaces such as these ones that promote community-led services are critical to continue, support, and expand. This way, we have a safe solution to prevent future violence within our community by engaging our youth in productive ways. By cutting this budget for these youth service divisions, it is a personal affront for hundreds of teenagers that live in Antioch that without communities like these ones that help give teenagers the ability to socialize and network outside of school, it leaves many with no option but to not participate in our community. If it wasn't for Antioch Youth Services of Teens, I would have missed out on so many life-changing opportunities, one of which was my YMCA Youth Government internship, which solidified the idea of me becoming an immigration lawyer. And all of this happened through ACT. Youth services are a staple to communities like these. Where we lack in resources, we make up with spirit and motivation to create something out of nothing into something. Without these services, we cultivate a stagnant environment not willing to change and inspire itself. These services don't only involve youth, but disenfranchise communities in Antioch in need of resources that we are able to provide, thanks to our advisor Malavi and all of our Antioch Council of Teens team working hard behind the scenes to make it possible for me and so many other teenagers. That is why I urge you to not cut or lessen the budget, but to help and support and uplift these programs, because investing in our youth is investing in the future success of our community. Thank you.
Morelia, followed by Kimberly.
I hope everyone's evening has been well. My name is Morelia Gilcavilla, and I apologize for my nasally tone. I'm currently recovering from a small sickness. I would like to begin by saying thank you to the city council members and everyone else present for your presence, your care, and your time. I express the importance of Antioch's youth services. It has provided others and myself with the opportunity to give back positively to Antioch, a community that has given me so much love. I joined Antioch Council of Teens as a sophomore when my former English teacher recommended I give the program a try. I attended meetings, engaged in conversations, and provided feedback. The program definitely made my year. What truly made me stay, however, were the bright smiles we'd received from Antioch citizens due to the events we developed. I feel warmer, richer, and happier to see the good that Antioch Council of Teens service brings. It is an honor to directly serve my community with support of the city. I cannot forget the mother who stopped me after volunteering for last year's teen bowling night. Having noticed my Antioch Council of Teens shirt, she thanked me for all of the free recreational events for the youth, explaining the joy her children have regained as participants in all of these events. With the support of Antioch Youth Services, I was nominated and awarded, as Montserrat said, in 2024 during Contra Costa Sesat y Chávez, sorry, celebration as part of their Youth Hall of Fame for Leadership and Civic Engagement. I hope more youth in Antioch are recognized for similar awards as so many are doing good for this community, and it should be talked about greatly. Compared to other cities, Antioch is not so positively talked about. They don't know or understand the efforts all of us put in. But I know this reputation will not stay this way. I am surrounded by like-minded youth and adults who will help bring change for the future. Now, as a senior in Antioch High School, I stand before you all with confidence and pride I previously lacked before being part of Antioch Council of Teens. I want this great program to continue flourishing, bringing great memories to other members of the community long after all current members have graduated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kimberly Figaroa, followed by Atiana.
Hello. Hi, Mayor. Hi, council members. Hi, everybody. I'm a little nervous, so bear with me. But my name is Kimberly Figaroa, and I wanted to just talk a little bit about my experience with youth services. And I'm gonna start off by saying how I was a previous member of the Build internship, and not to mention it was a really good and interesting internship, not just the pay, but also just meeting everybody and just getting that experience of what having an actual like job would be like, like being responsible, being there on time. And not to mention that that program had led me to the opportunity of being now a permanent employee, a part-time employee for youth services, which is the best, not to be biased. And not to mention, I'm actually the one who makes the flyers, the banners, and all the social media handling. So whenever you guys see a flyer, I made them. So, you know, remember me. And not to mention that those two things also really helped me with other communication skills, also as like public speaking like I'm doing right now. If you would have asked me to speak a couple of years ago, I would have said, heck, no. So thank you for that. Thank you, Montserrat. Thank you, Malavi, for giving me those opportunities. And I hope you guys reconsider or consider the budget for youth services because it does open a lot of opportunities, how your logo says, the opportunity lives here, so keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Atiana, followed by Shagufa Khan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, community members. My name is Atiana Masui, and to start off, I've been doing Antioch programs since I was fifteen. I'm now turning twenty, so I just want this to be a testimony that these programs are highly valued in the community regardless of the age. Right now, I'm a MAP participant. I'm here to talk about how incredibly important it is to continue to allocate funds, fundings for these programs, just to bring more cohorts together after these few cohorts this year going through these programs. Sorry, please bear with me. I'm very nervous. We, the youth of Antioch, are eager to contribute to our community. We want to learn, grow, and build a stronger community and future for not only ourselves, but also the city. But without the funding, we will face these significant barriers, like the lack of accessible paid internships and opportunities for these young adults. We must keep these opportunities available for young adults to have these internships because they encourage and provide secured learning experiences for us. Unpaid internships, while still valuable, are simply not feasible for most of us. We have bills to pay, families to support, and transportation costs to cover. As a full-time college student, it was never easy to find a job without work experience. But luckily, these programs have created opportunities and opened spaces that we would have never imagined ourselves to be in and for us to work in. These paid internships have allowed us to grow and learn as the next line of employees. These opportunities are more than just jobs. They offer valuable skills, professional networks, community engagement, and economic empowerment. We learn practical skills that are not always taught in classrooms. We build connections with local businesses and organizations. Shout out to Rubicon Programs and Monument Impact. We contribute directly to the well-being of our city, gaining a sense of purpose and belonging. We earn living wages and are able to support ourselves and our families. Please consider the impact of these opportunities and help us build a brighter future for ourselves and for Antioch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shagufa, followed by Chloe.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Shagufa Khan. I am with Monument Impact as a community organizer. I am also supervising two amazing MAP interns. This program allows interns to really get to know what a workforce labor looks like, things like learning how to use Microsoft Outlook, how to book appointments, how to communicate with members of the public. These two interns came to me speaking about how they lack communication skills, how they get nervous just being in public or talking to community members, talking about issues, complex issues. Mind you, it's only been one month, and these two interns are working with tenants on unlawful detainers, talking to tenants, booking tenant legal clinics, and essentially going door-to-door, talking to people about issues within the community. And it's these types of programs that allow young people to grow in their workforce development. We expect young people to put in work, but without pay. This program pays them and gives them a chance to show what adulthood looks like. You get paid for the work that you do. You come to work on time, you're professionally dressed, and you're ready to create a better opportunity for not only yourself, but the community around you. Being a young person myself, I turned twenty-five. I was born and raised here in Antioch. I didn't get to see these opportunities when I was growing up. MAP, the ACT, it's really, really awesome to see that there are more and more youth programs because thirty percent of the Antioch population is young people. So we need to invest in our young people. These people are young. They will probably be elected officials. They're probably going to be public administrators, lawyers, surgeons. So I hope you look at these young people and invest in them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chloe Salazar, followed by Jahandran.
Hello, I'm Chloe Salazar, and I'm fifteen years old. And I'm here to just talk about the R and R Youth Tutoring Center. I go to Freedom High School, and the R and R Tutoring Center really helped me with my reading and with my math. Thank you to Mr. Sandra and Ms. Marjorie for setting this up for young students like me to be able to get better grades and higher education. And thank you.
Thank you.
Johanne Dren, followed by Francisco.
Thank you. It's pronounced Wunder and Desamés. I'm very nervous, and that went really quick. I'm here as a nine-year resident of the city of Antioch. I'm also an entrepreneur and a parent. And I have watched the transformative impact that this department has made in the last two and a half years. Hats off to Director Johnson and Montserrat. I wanna leave with you because everyone has said everything else, and I listened. You said, "Don't be redundant." So, the youth testimonies have said everything that I was gonna bring to the table. As a youth development person, I have my own-- sorry, I'm getting nervous. I am a co-founder of a nonprofit organization that supports youth services. I've been doing it for over 26 years. I'm hoping to bring that program to the city of Antioch. It's called J-PY Junior Entrepreneurship. What I heard is that we have a deficit in our sales tax. So, that tells me that we need more resources, more revenue, more sales tax. And I hope that we can consider figuring out more revenue streams and partner with more companies to increase that so that we don't take away from the liver of the organization that is taking care of all the bad things in the city, but helping the city at the same time. You heard about resources and environment. That's helping our city. You heard about triage that's happening at the community level. That's helping our city and state. I mean, not our state, but you know what I'm saying. I'm getting nervous. My whole point is that you heard the testimonies. You have a really hard job. I feel for you because this department is helping the community so much, and it has done so much in two and a half years, not only supporting and taking very good care of a $3 million budget, but bringing in 50%. It's huge. And so, there's other resources such as the Expanded Opportunities Program that cities are taking advantage of, a program that we did in Oakland right now. We have an initiative that is fully funded from that program. I am Prop 28. So, I hope that you take time to find other resources to support this department and everyone that's doing a great job. And I love all the testimonies, and big up to the youth. I'm so inspired to keep doing what I'm doing, and I hope that you are inspired too.
Thank you.
Francisco Torres, and I apologize for pronouncing Yo Chanan.
Hello, City Council, Mayor, and staff. My name is Francisco Torres, and I'm here on behalf of Reimagined Antioch. What I was gonna say is, they said it all. They said it very well. I can't top that. And enthusiasm and the energy and the spark, I mean, you guys have an easy decision. One thing I did notice, and this has happened also at the last meeting and this meeting, when I was first an activist here about four or five years ago for housing, there were some activists here for the homeless, and they were reporting on a raid done by the Antioch Police Department. And heads were beaten, tents were thrown away, which they weren't supposed to be. It was said that they weren't supposed to be. And the activists were just at their wits' end. Four years later, you have them talking to you. And the one last week was a woman who was very humble and really appreciated the programs that Ms. Johnson is doing with community resources and public safety. And I saw that again today. Two gentlemen were here, and two people were here. One was a lady who now has a full-time job, again, thanks to the resources. So, there seems to be a change here in Antioch. And the last four or five years seem like, to some people, like there was a negative thing going on, but no, it wasn't. Change was going on, and we need change in Antioch. I know Antioch from back in the day. It's different. People that are coming to live here are not only from Pittsburgh, Baypoint, Concord, but they're also from Oakland and Richmond and San Francisco and San Jose, from El Salvador, from different countries. This is a changing Antioch, and we have to live with that. We can't unchange. Time does not allow that, so we have to come up with the change. And what I really appreciate about public safety and community resources is that it also brings in revenue. You don't have to worry about so much of the general funds here. They're bringing in money, and thank you to Tamisha Torres Walker, who made sure that that was funded from some resources, some fundings she got. I think it's from the state, if I'm correct. And then you continuance of that, my God, it's just amazing what you guys have been doing. And public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Francisco.
Yo Chanan, followed by Naja.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yo Chann Waters. I currently work for the Youth Services Network Division as an office assistant. And I'd just like to share with you my experience regarding my time being there and how I joined. So, to start off, I joined via Spring Board. I applied for both unhoused and Human Resources Department. Unfortunately, both had pulled out from the internship. But through that, I was able to meet Montserrat Cabral and the Youth Services Network Division team. And through that, I was just able to learn to see how the youth works and operates. And it taught me so much more about the community and how it functions and overall insight of the city. And honestly, it allowed me to also partake in community or like just bettering the community. Like, for example, the Sycamore Beautification, Spring Board also partook in that. And while over that, overall-- Sorry, I'm just so nervous, guys.
You're doing great.
But yeah, it just taught me so much. I really love it. And through the experience and the work I've shown throughout my time as an intern, Montserrat Cabral has allowed me to join the Youth Services Network Team as an office assistant and help their goal, or our goal, in furthering and creating an opportunity for our youth in the city of Antioch. Also, I'd like to encourage that any oncoming juniors, seniors, or graduated seniors to partake in the Spring Board internship as it allows you to just understand your city more and just gives you insight. And so, you can just share your opinions, et cetera. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Naja McClure, followed by Melissa Case.
Oh, God. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Naja Unique, and I am both an advocate and a proud participant of the Mayor's Apprenticeship Program. It's not only a job placement, but it also requires-- well, it also provides experience, skills, and mentorship for the long-term success. And before I joined the MAP program, I wasn't sure where I wanted to start at, but now they gave me so many opportunities to choose from that. Funding the MAP investment in our community's future will reduce unemployment, strengthen the workforce, and empowers young people to achieve financial independence. By supporting this program, you're not just preparing us for jobs, you're preparing us for life. I stand before you as proof of this impact. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Melissa Case, followed by Leslie May.
I'm bringing all my notes up here, but like-- I thought your presentation was great, but the comments are better. I mean, I already knew the MAP program was good. I already knew the-- that's the-- and the Antioch Council of Teens. But I just wanna say to the youth and the parents, the awesome parents that are here, wow, that was-- to me, that was great, and it was so inspiring. And I was gonna make some comments about other programs we need to keep, but I think we definitely need to keep those two after hearing them. Just hearing them shows me that it's successful. We don't wanna get rid of successful things. I recognize this is a difficult position, as already stated by people up there on the dais. And I'm just gonna urge you to truly listen to the community regarding the programs that our community values. And if our budget can't support them, I ask you actively to seek alternative funding solutions rather than cutting services that we want to keep. For me, my key priorities, besides the two I just talked about, is Antioch Animal Services, our police department, the Angelo Quito Care Team, and most importantly, I think, the Antioch staffing. I honestly feel that Bessie is the best-- is the well-kept secret that we have right now. I don't wanna get it out to other cities that we have her. I don't want people to steal her. So, I really am going to urge you to find the money, to get her the support that she needs. And I think that's also important, too. I also think we need some stronger coaching accountability where funds are allocated for the houseless services instead of-- we need these Band-Aids, like the feeding program, the shower program. It creates humanity for these people. And but for long-term success, I think there needs to be more accountability of Opportunity Village, and that's kind of like our similar program. That's where I made some notes. I might just email you because I only got 56 seconds left. But there's supposed to be the exits on the Opportunity Village. Some of the stats, I think you need to get into the nitty-gritty. I'll just email you about what I think about that. Basically, like, how long do they contact them? Is success really a shared room? I don't consider that success for someone, but maybe other people do. My other notes. I have so many notes. Oh, in the Cal VIP program, consultants, 1.3 million on consultants. I just wanna know why. I also would like an update as far as job and staff goes, is we have a housing coordinator. I'm not distant on her because I don't know her, and I don't know what she does. And that's why I would like-- I would also like you to put out something regarding what the job description is. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Leslie May, followed by Michelle Rand.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm gonna repeat what all the youth and some of the adults have said. I will say that two of what I call my baby butterflies were here tonight with their mom. They had to leave. And one young adult butterfly of mine, she had to leave. If it wasn't for the Antioch Youth Council, I went to the mayor at that time and talked with him. Everyone knows the type of clients I work with. So, I was kinda leery about taking him to that program. But I did take him to the program, the boy first. He was accepted with open arms, and his sister and both of them, I've watched him turn from withdrawn, enclosed children to beautiful human beings. It just helped bring them all the way out. One is one who says she wants to be a doctor. The other person, I was able to connect with Opportunity Junction, and now they're helping her get on her feet. So, these are places. When you work with the community members like I do with severe trauma, we need to have a place that will accept them and will help them become the people they need to be. And some of them have severe mental illness. We need to be that type, those people. That's what kind of example we need to be, is to accept them and help them flourish. And I wanna thank the Office of Public Safety and Community Resources and you, Ms. Johnson, for doing that. I feel personally it was done for me because it helped me with my clients. Every client I have, I feel like is my child unless they're older, and I call them my older butterflies. So, and I wanna see them thrive. So, in terms of budget cuts and things like that, there's money. I went, you know, I know they're gonna talk about this later, but I went line item, line item, and looked at the police department's budget and the city's budget. There is no need to defund them. There is some money that can be shifted. And I suggest the money be shifted there, but I also suggest that the taxes for all these other businesses that we have for adults' pleasures, they be taxed a little bit more. So, if we're gonna please the adults, we sure need to be trying to please the youth in this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Rand, followed by Johnny Hines. Michelle? Johnny Hines? Followed by Nancy Northrop.
Good evening, everybody. I'm not Johnny Hines. He had to go. He had his daughter with him, so I'm stepping in. My name is London Galloway. I'm one of the program directors for Bridge Builders to the New Generation. Couple of the kids who spoke tonight actually take advantage of some of the services we provide. We're located in eight of the schools out here in Antioch, and we do social, emotional learning, career, college readiness, academic support, behavioral support, restorative justice, as well as, you know, just introducing our students to something new. We also host things when the kids are out of school. This is an attempt to decrease violence in our community because we know idols' hands make the devil's work, right? So, for our youth, you know, there's no such thing as a bad kid, only bored kids who get into bad things. So, during spring break, we offer a camp that we do with, you know, the city of Antioch. We offer a four-week summer program where kids get introduced to different colleges. We take them to actual schools. Last year, they got to go to Stanford and San Jose, places they never even thought they were gonna walk around, and they got to hang out with actual college students, the BSU. They got to talk to, you know, different departments on campus. We introduce kids to different kinds of trades. So, these are things that kids are experiencing with these youth programs, right? We also facilitate different things with AUSD, like the King's Conference. We also have the Resilience, Innovation, Success, and Empowerment Rise Conference that we do. So, there's a whole bunch of different things that are, you know, in this community for our kids. And if we take those away, you know, we're gonna increase recidivism, right? We don't want our kids to be making mistakes and falling back into criminality and these labels and these stereotypes. We wanna provide them with something special. And what we do at Bridge Builders is give them that safe space. You know, Antonio, he came up here. He told me today. He said, "Hey, man, I got this thing going on later. Could you come?" He's my MAP intern. He works with me on my site daily. And he's like, "Yo, I appreciate the mentorship." And I'm like, "This isn't mentorship. This is just you having a safe space. You're being yourself." So, by providing our youth these opportunities, providing our youth these safe spaces, they'll be themselves, and they'll make our city better. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy, or Julia, we have two names on this one, followed by Gavin Payton. Is Nancy here? Or Julia Rose? Gavin Payton? And after Gavin will be Nadia King.
Good evening, Council. Where do I start? Okay, so, when you get rid of our programs, this is what you're actually doing. The homeless rate is gonna go high because we don't have stability. And if you guys have a home, don't your home normally have a foundation? So, it don't, you know, fly off or fall apart. Every home needs a foundation, right? Then you're-- then you wanna talk about how gun violence is an issue? Taking away these programs is not it. You wanna talk about policing and reason why our expulsion ratios and suspension rates and the prison pipeline? That's because of the lack of resources. I've been coming to this council time and time again about these resources and about how, you know, we need justice for us because the youth here are afraid to walk out of their homes because they're afraid of like what's gonna happen to them, like LaMond Baldwin. They're afraid they're gonna be attacked, just like the previous mayor, or being called a gorilla, or being called a water buffalo. a gorilla, or being called a water buffalo. No one remembers those things, but we do. And it just seems like, you know, when we are fighting for justice, it seems like you guys wanna move the finish line. So I'm asking the council to not take away the funding and cut these programs, because the youth just came out and spoke. But let's be clear, they're not gonna just come out and spoke again, because they were out there protesting when Black Lives Matter. They were out there protesting in the rain. They was out there speaking the truth. So when are we, as the people and the adults in the room, gonna actually take action? Because the youth can't vote, but yet you guys are making decisions for youth that, and don't take the time of day to actually see what the day-to-day issue is? Because if you actually went to the schools and actually asked them about the issues that are going on in their schools, about the drug system that's going in the schools, and the policing, the overpolicing that's going on in school, the over-disciplinary actions, or the reason why the youth that are acting out the way they're acting, maybe we would have some peace and decency. Maybe we wouldn't have to be afraid to walk out of our homes, because we are black women and black kids. Maybe we wouldn't be afraid at all. So what are we gonna do? Because I know what I'm gonna do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nadia King, followed by Lenisha Lee.
Hello, everybody. My name is Nadia King. I am a sophomore at Dozier-Lee Medical High School, and I'm the second Vice President for the East County NAACP Youth Council. And something that I just wanna talk about, my experience in youth groups. I've been a part of youth groups since I started school here. I've been raised in Antioch. Sorry. I'm tired. I think that's something that I didn't hear anybody talk about, is cultural competency here in Antioch. So I want us to look, everybody here is from different backgrounds, they all have different walks of life. Look at how diverse our city council is. That is because a lot of us are culturally competent. We know how to respect other people and work together beside our biases. And having youth groups that include all these different, like religions and ethnic groups, that teaches children to be culturally competent. By having youth groups with all these different people in them, you raise empathetic, you raise respectful, you raise people who can work together. Because you can't work in a community if you have biases that keep you from working with other people. And having youth groups like that, they teach you to do that. They can also teach you, like, team-building skills. And for my experience in the NAACP, I've learned how to write resolutions. I know how to write a resolution and ask people bigger than some of the people here for change. I've gone to national conventions, and I've asked for reforms for education and for treatment of students, like myself. Youth groups also help students who are in bad homes. I have many friends who suffer complicated home situations, and having youth groups that will open out, like, outlets for them to leave their complicated situations and look for better. And let them know what their story and where they come from doesn't define them, is really helpful. And I know these aren't true, but a couple of people just say that boredom breeds a lot of violence. Boredom makes bad decisions, and not having bored kids means that you'll raise kids who do productive things, like Rally for Change, which is what I've learned at the NAACP. I've learned, just by coming here and speaking today, which my youth group told me to come and do, and inspired me to come and do, I've learned how to be able to, like, speak up. When I first came here, I looked at my phone, and I told the mayor to give me a second. But I haven't done that today. And that's the impact of youth groups, who build up their youth competence, who build up their ability to come out here and speak for change. And it's important that we have these type of youth running our city, because it'll lead to a more productive city. And we'll get a way better reputation than what we have now, if we continue to supply these youth programs with enough money to raise up our youth. That's all.
Thank you.
Lenisha and Zavion, followed by Cynthia Walker.
Hello, everybody. How are you guys? So it's been a long night. I am the Deputy Director of the UCSF Trio Upper Bound Program housed at Antioch High. Thank you, Louie, for bringing the program onto the Title I school campus, okay? This is one of our students, Zavion, and I'm gonna let him speak, because we don't have much time. Go ahead.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. Hello, Antioch community. My name is Zavion. I'm a 12th grader from Antioch High School. The UCSF program is a fantastic program that has helped students to and from and to and through college. This program has taught me lots and gave me plenty of materials to get me through high school, and soon began, as UCmer said. The Trio program has opened up many materials and opportunities to explore and expand my career choices and scholarship opportunities that is out there for many students, but never taken by students. Through this amazing program, I have gained opportunities to experience the Black College Expo and have gained over $20,000 in scholarships with the help of the Trio program. Every student should be able to benefit off of this such an amazing program. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Council. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
So since we still have a little bit of time left, the way we got to that Black College Expo was through your programs. We need you guys to keep those programs going. For many years, we've been working together, Monica, I'm behind the scenes, and I see what happens with our youth. I see how they either fall down or they prosper. Those two young ladies that was gonna be the lawyer, and the other lady that followed her more earlier, those are my students. We need you guys to keep these programs going, so we can keep benefiting and keep giving these kids these opportunities. He got $20,000 at that Black College Expo that you guys provided the bus for and the lunches for. Do you know how big of a deal that was? It made such a big difference in the Antioch High and Deer Valley students. I need you guys to continue to do those little things. So while you have all these people here telling y'all what y'all doing wrong, let me tell you what you doing right. And I need you guys to keep doing that right thing, keep finding ways. You found money. Keep finding that money. Keep supporting your youth. You brought this program to Antioch High. Keep finding those programs. Just don't give up, don't lose hope. Remember, God got y'all. And you guys are trying, and that's all we need y'all to do, keep trying. Because you're right, Oakland did come here. I am an Oakland product, and I'm here helping your youth. Richmond did come here. Just keep building the programs like Oakland got and Richmond got. They have those programs. So you guys are doing the right thing, and you're moving in the right steps, building those programs. Thank you for your time and space.
Thank you.
Cynthia Walker, followed by Frank Sterling.
My name is Sneitha Walker. I serve as Director of the UCSF program also. I wear many hats. I am also the Ministry Leader of Grace Bible Fellowship for the College and College and Career Ministry. I also am the Executive Director for Parents Connected. And I want to thank the Youth Services Department for stepping up and helping us take 94 students to the Black Expo in Oakland. It was, we did it in like three days, and I wanna do a special thanks to Maely. So we got the bus, we got the food, we got flyers. Who's the flyer person? I wanna thank her. She did an absolutely perfect job getting the flyers done. I wanna say, let me see, thank you for the generous contribution of the buses, the food, the outreach of the flyers. It played a pivotal role in recruiting 94 students to attend the impactful event. The college fair showcased a wide range of educational opportunities, including historically black colleges and universities, California State Universities, Universities of California's, private colleges, and enrichment programs. The city of Antioch was well-represented, with our students making up one of the largest groups in attendance. Every participating student was accepted into at least one college, with many receiving on-the-spot admissions and scholarship offers. Your commitment to investing in our youth is truly making a difference in shaping their future. Thank you for your unwavering support, dedication, and educational equity with sincere gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Sterling, followed by Cassandra Qinto.
Good to see you all. Like a lot of people that are coming up, I think I could agree that I think the youth and the kids really said it all. And I hope you all could see how important the Office or the Department of Public Safety and Community Resources is. So I'm with the community here tonight to ask you that you keep fully funding this department. This is, why are we talking about it? Why do we have this new department? Is because the old ways that we were doing it for so long, they weren't cutting it anymore. So this was developed to help make change. And I think if she's still here, or if she left already, the first person that spoke said one of the most important things in the beginning is that this lessens the chances of violence in the future. This lessens the chance for police engagement and criminal justice system engagement. So again, I will say that I hope you can fully fund the Offices of Public Safety and Community Resources. And a lot of people haven't talked about the Angelo Qinto Crisis Response Team, so I would say that that is something I hope you can include in that. And I heard you mention that it's gonna be doubling, because it's gonna be changing from one source of funding to another. So I hope you can continue to fund that as well. All the people that I have spoke with in form of the police chiefs that we've had in the past, Addington, Chief Ford, and V. Hill, everybody, they have all expressed their interest in keeping this. They said it was very important. So I hope that you all can continue that, and I know that you're talking to them about it. I'd also like to challenge you all, when you come down here, to continue to use the proper name and don't modify it to just the Care Team, because it's named the Angelo Qinto Crisis Response Team for a reason, because Angelo was killed by the Antioch Police that night. And I am a believer, like a lot of people are, that if we had that service that night, that Angelo could still be here with us. So if you wanna change it to the Care Team, please acknowledge first that it's the Angelo Qinto Crisis Response Team. And then I would also ask that, just kind of it's the one-year anniversary of Aaron Bushnell. I don't know if a lot of you know who he is. I know somebody might. But he lit himself on fire protesting his involvement in the genocide that's happening. One of the smallest things that you could do, well, his words were, what would you do if you found yourself in times of slavery, or Jim Crow, or apartheid? What would you be doing if your country was committing genocide? And the answer is, you're doing it now. And when you approved the Caterpillar Purchase, that was one of the simplest acts that you could have done by not doing that. So I wish that you have that stability tonight to continue to fund these programs. Thank you.
Cassandra, followed by Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor Bernal, City Council members and directors. My name is Cassandra Qinto Collins, Angelo Qinto's mother. Tonight, I want to reemphasize the importance of having non-police crisis response teams. Allocating funding and developing this team shows community members that their safety is a priority. Right now, many cities are creating their own mental health response teams, not cutting funding for what serves as a robust basis for them. I want to remind you that when Angelo was killed, and my daughter asked the police multiple times if there was someone else she could have called, they told her there was not. Neither of us even told about mental health nonprofit NAMI Contra Costa when Angelo was hospitalized months before his death, despite their executive director, Gigi Crowder, who is now the CEO of NAMI, providing a training and information to the police department. There have been no deaths in the time of this team's creation to now. And I truly believe that if the AQCRT had been in place then, I'm sorry, and we had been properly informed about it, Angelo would still be alive today. It is unquestionably unnecessary and overdue. Community resource deserves to continue evolving and supporting residency need. We hope that you find and allocate funding and resources to ensure this happens. We have no doubt this will save lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, followed by Andrew Becker.
I will speak on that as well. Hello, Council. Can you hear me pretty good? As we have sat here and listened to so many youth speak about their accomplishments and their dreams, I commend them for speaking up for themselves and for their peers. I do hope they can keep the mentorship and opportunities. Also, as you analyze the budget and discuss the cost of crucial innovative housing and services for the houseless, I wish to remind you that people on the street who are hungry, freezing, without basic access to toilets, fresh water, or shelter, they need another voice, right? That's us, and that can be you as well. They have dreams and hopes that some basic services can help start to give them those dreams and that hope back. We heard people speak of the showers, and I have a short story. I see it as kind of a hub. Last spring, a chronically houseless friend of ours was disoriented and physically ill. And his actual physical illness, as severe as it was, actually could have been avoided if he had access to fresh water, soap, and fresh drinking water to drink and also to wash his hands, so that he wouldn't spread a basic infection. If he had access to it in the parks especially. So I hadn't seen my friend in a while, and I went to the showers to search, and the person who runs the showers knew exactly who I was talking about. She knew him by name, smiled and laughed when she talked about him. And she even had like a brand-new sealed sleeping bag for him, so that I could give to him. And, you know, he was someone's child once. He was taking care of his mother, but when she passed away, he was kicked out of the housing that he was in, and he's been homeless ever since. It's been a long time. I've known him 11 years, and he's been homeless long before that. I do feel that being on the streets has severely taken his ability to care for himself, even when he's presented with options and services. It doesn't mean he doesn't want them, right? So we need to get as many people cared for before they get to that distressing level, but also when they are at that level. Also regarding the Angelo Qinto Crisis Response Team, it was created after the Antioch Police responded to a call for help when Angelo was experiencing crisis, but they didn't help. They caused harm. He wasn't violent. Despite this, Antioch police officers kneeled on and excessively restrained him in front of his mother on the bedroom floor, continued for four and a half minutes after he was already unresponsive. Angelo never regained consciousness and was declared dead on December 26, 2020. It was created to stop this kind of harm. Angelo was someone's child and someone's loved one. Angelo is on so many of our minds, and his hopes and dreams were taken. As a council, you have a choice now to pursue the safety of the children and adults of this town who may experience a crisis, so their dreams and their loved ones' dreams are not cut short.
Thank you.
Andrew Becker, followed by Curtis Penn.
I wasn't going to speak tonight, because there were so many individuals here to speak, but as I listened to the individuals come up, especially the youth, I felt called. And I first and foremost want to say that my heart goes out to the Qinto Collins family always, and this community stands with that family, I know. You know, tonight is a special meeting. It's not a general council meeting. And I think as we listen to the public comments tonight, we truly understand why tonight is a special meeting. Growing up in this community, I was 13 when I went down to the Nick Rodriguez Community Center and joined the Antioch Youth Council. And it was seven individuals, with one staff member, Gina Lombardi-Grabbert, who worked tirelessly to bring revolutionary programs, similar to these programs here now. Time changes, but people do not. We are always a community, and we always look to create these needs in the community. And I think that that youth council at that time... And I think that that youth council at that time, the ACT and all of these other programs now are a testament that when a seed is planted and water is given and light is brought, that it does grow into something. And so I understand the numbers and the data, the deficits and the revenue streams. But we also understand that the city of Antioch looks to a team in Los Angeles to manage its investment portfolio. And we diversify that portfolio, and we hold investments in Bank of America, Harley-Davidson, Caterpillar. But then we look at how do we invest in our community? And I think what stood out to me tonight was not watching the young individuals and their parents come up here and speak. It was watching staff and consultants and their receptiveness to those comments. The pride, the joy, the drive to scale that. And when we have 21 census tracts, 17 of them under 80% AMI, four of them in extremely low income, we know that there is a correlation between housing and programs. So I hope that we can find those revenues through these departments and others to support these programs. And I appreciate staff and consultants' time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Curtis, followed by Al Gilbert.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Curtis Penn. I am the Division Director of Justice Services with Felton Institute. My heart goes out to the Quinto Collins family as well. I was sitting here thinking, I was reminded roughly two and a half years ago when we had a robust discussion about putting a mobile community crisis team in the city of Antioch. And that question was, you know, do we need that? And it was a resounding yes. We need a community mobile crisis team in the city of Antioch. It was such importance to me that I actually moved out here from Richmond, and I now am a resident in the city of Antioch because it was important that this program would be successful. I was part of the evolution and inception of this program where we started out focusing on responding to 911 calls as an alternative to law enforcement. Since then, we've actually developed more of a hybrid community response program where we're also doing wraparound case management as well as community engagement. As the presenter had mentioned, we had over 8,000 calls. Many of those calls involved individuals experiencing moderate to high functional impairment. And we were able to intervene in those calls where no one lost their lives. It is important that we continue the work that we're doing to provide the continuity of care for this community. We have some success in doing this work. We was just recently recognized by the Public Safety Partnership Committee where we were asked to do a presentation in Minneapolis, Minnesota, before a number of national law enforcement agencies on behalf of Antioch, the city of Antioch. The presentation was well received to the point to where many of folks approached us and felt that this was a model that needed to be replicated across the country. And so I implore you to continue this program as it's moved forward and look to continue to serve the great city of Antioch. So thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker card I have is Al Gilbert.
Is that one of those best for last things? Okay. Good evening, mayor, council members, and distinguished leaders of the city of Antioch. I am the CEO of Felton Institute. And I'm glad Curtis mentioned that we had a chance to speak in Minneapolis regarding the success of the program here because it was a minus eight degrees when we were there in December. And I want you to appreciate how wonderful it is living in California because that was ridiculous. Okay, but anyway, having gotten over that, I do want to give my appreciation to the Quinto Collins family. Too big of a price to pay to create this kind of a program. What's important for us is that this was the right model, and we are really appreciative of the fact that we have the support of the police department and the city in making sure that the residents of Antioch get an immediate response when they feel like they have challenges that they call 911 for. It's also important for us to recognize that the police probably have the hardest job than anybody can have because they're the ones who have to defend every critical situation that the county and the city and residents are impacted by. It's unfair to ask them to come to a situation where life is at risk and then also ask them to be social workers at the same time. I don't know why people expect that's a manageable task. So we take it very seriously that our job is to be in partnership with both the residents of the city as well as the police department in understanding that we are behavioral health specialists. And we can spend the time that critical situations require. We can provide the wraparound services. We're experts in de-escalation. We're medical experts. We have EMTs on our team. And we can do the kind of work that you just can't ask for a CBO to do. And the reason why our responses and the reason why the program's been so successful is that the federal monitor recognized, as have other police departments across the country, that this model, what they were really concerned about and most interested is, how could we go into community at 24/7 at really critical times without the support of the fire department or the police? And what I explained is that we're connected and supported by the fire department because, I mean, by the police department because we have phones. And we know that they are there to support us, and they send us out. But what's really important is out of the 6,600 calls that we responded to last year, 6,000 of them, we went out solo and addressed those situations. And I'm going to run out of time. So I want to say thank you for your investment in the program, and we're going to do our best job to make sure that this is, that the success of the program is spread throughout the country.
And we received one more card from Pastor Neil.
Glad you all invited me out here today. Really appreciate it. My name is Pastor Neil Bringuetti. He's Seven Stars Baptist Church. Also, I am the silent partner in Yvette and Neil, if you've ever heard of Yvette and Neil. And I'm silent because she talks a lot. Amen. But what we wanted to talk about today is the partnership we entered into to do the Seasons Feast. Now, we were brought in and we put together an amazing impactful program. And that's what the big thing is, is that it was impactful. It served an underserved community. People came out and were blessed in ways that we involved NAMI in. We involved other organizations in it. Safe Return came into it. And they all came in for a reason because this area has been ignored. There was a rash of violence that happened that was never addressed. And so we were like, well, how can we touch them? We went out and we walked. We knocked. We talked. And we said, you know what? If there's going to be a party thrown, it should be thrown for them. And they came out. And we brought unions. And we brought jobs. And we brought employers. And all those employers said, they were overwhelmingly impressed with that these people wanted jobs. They weren't just there to get toys. They wanted to join unions. They wanted to increase the income that's coming into Antioch, but they just had not been given that opportunity. And so when you invest in these little small programs, remember, it's the partnerships that make them work. And that's what they have done in that youth department is that they reached out and they made a partnership that made their investment multiply. I don't even want to go over all the numbers of how much was spent blessing these people. Yes, somebody has the numbers. It was almost $20,000 invested by different groups to make sure that they were blessed. And they returned that blessing by showing interest, not just in getting free toys, but in getting jobs, in getting into unions, into improving their area, and talking about, we have been afraid, but we came out for this. So when we talk about cutting budgets, you know, you're talking about cutting people off, saying these people aren't important enough for us to help. Just remember, when you give them a chance, they show out. Amen.
All right, thank you.
That completes our public comment cards.
All right, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Torres Walker.
It's empty in here. I get it. I wanted to go home early too. Maybe somebody will table the next item. I really appreciate hearing all of the responses about the Department of Public Safety and Community Resources tonight. You know how when somebody say like, you know, when you know you give somebody their flowers or, you know, before you transition or leave this world, you want to know that you did something that was meaningful? Tonight was that night for me. When I brought the idea to this department to the city council three years ago, there was, I want to thank Councilwoman Wilson for her curiosity and being willing to help me see this through and think through how it was possible to have a department like this in the city of Antioch. There were also critics, many critics, because calling, naming it the Department of Public Safety and Community Resources, many individuals in the city pushed back because they said, you're taking the jobs away from the police department. This department is not doing police work. This department is doing work that is saving lives, which is similar to what the police do in enforcing laws that save lives. Public safety has never just been about policing and fire. Public safety is about environmental sustainability. Public safety is about access to affordable housing and resources and services for our unhoused residents. Public safety is about violence intervention and, yes, prevention so that we get out in front of violence before it occurs in our community because that's how you make communities safe. Public safety is about youth services and youth development. You, most people don't understand that youth development is not recreation. It is a vision to instill pride and purpose in communities by young people, by giving them the resources they told us they got an opportunity to access today and how it has transformed their lives and how they're going to be the next generation of leaders. There were early challenges that I'm happy to have proved the critics wrong. I want to appreciate Director Johnson for your work, your team, and every other department in this city of Antioch that also makes this particular department a success. One of the things I notice in this city is that departments work in silos. Normally didn't work together at all or regularly communicated with each other. The development of this department, I would say, has forced every department in this city to start to get out of their silos and work together for the benefit of every marginalized resident in need of services and young person and family in the city of Antioch. What I want to do right now is just thank the city of Antioch and the voters of Antioch for giving this tomboy and black Latina from Richmond an opportunity to serve on this council and be creative and do something like push for this department, which has brought in a lot of outside dollars. I'm so excited. Congratulations. And it's still only 2% of our general fund. A morally balanced budget in any city or governmental entity invests in these type of strategies. And when the budget is only 2%, what it means is that you're absolutely doing more with less, and you shouldn't have to. Thank you.
Any other comments? No?
I'll just, in support of Tamisha's comments, it was a real joy tonight. I try to hold a straight face, but sometimes it's hard when young people are speaking and sharing their experiences and programs that we provide to them in the community and the schools. So for me, it was really uplifting to hear what young people are doing. As a principal for a long time, educator for a long time, it was always brought me joy to see the talents that young people have, especially when we provide them the support. It's always been a disappointment to me that young people that do such wonderful things in our community don't get their due in the media. People don't give young people enough credit for the things that they do. We see it in the different programs that we're all involved with. I saw it as an educator for a long time. So yeah, so I echo your sentiments. You know, we have a tough job in looking at this budget because it is very challenging, and there's a lot to look at. Obviously, a high school budget is much smaller than a city budget. So we have a lot to look at to roll up our sleeves and make some very tough decisions. I appreciate city staff making some initial cuts that I've seen from the last rollout from a few weeks ago. And we're just going to have to continue to do some more of that. But I just wanted to share my enthusiasm and my appreciation for the young people and the services that we're providing them here in the city. And kudos to our staff on a job well done.
As the mayor goes, say something. To Councilwoman Torres Walker, I was curious and not judgmental. So we all learned about this the other day. And thank you for bringing your, this is your child, and it came to fruition, and we're seeing the great results of it. Antioch Council of Teens, I can't be, I can't be any prouder than what I heard today. You know, providing services for youth is more than just, oh, well, let's set up a basketball league or a baseball league. It's, you know, having a space to do coding. I think tonight I heard, I heard young people talk about being doctors, lawyers, journalists. And I thought I heard one other thing, but I heard these things, and they said, and they all, they all referred back to your department. This is where they were supported and uplifted to get that done. So I'm looking forward to seeing these doctors come back, these lawyers come back to our community. I have to give, for Antioch Council of Teens, I have to give flowers to former Mayor Wade Harper. And the reason is, back in 2014, Mayor Harper and myself traveled to Baltimore for a conference, and we met with the Baltimore Youth Commission that worked on policy. And we said, why aren't we not, why are we not doing that in Antioch? And came back, and the Antioch Council of Teens was born and is thriving. So I couldn't be more prouder of that group. Thank you, Montserrat, and thank you, Ms. Johnson. I have to say thank you to Ms. Hospakovits. Close enough? Who, yeah, so who, who always takes my phone call when I go, I have this, what can it go in? And who's been always there when I've had questions in regards to climate action, environmental issues. You've been here since day one, very standing on that and being, and making sure that we are following the guidelines, the state and the nation, well, let's say the state right now. I don't know what's going on on the national level. But thank you for that. But just wanted to have those few words. And, oh, and Ms. Quinto Collins, thank you so much. Who knew, if I would have gone back five or 10 years ago, who knew that me writing an op-ed would coincide with you? who knew that me writing an op-ed would coincide with you and coming up with this, Angela Quinto. It's always going to be Angela Quinto, Community Response Team, to me. So thank you for pushing us and the work that you're doing right now. Nobody realizes she's, her and her husband have been in Sacramento working on policy, so thank you for the work that you do.
So, Mr. Mayor, member of council, anybody who was here tonight or listened to this walked away very, very impressed. I mean, it was an incredible testimony from our own citizens, from our own youth, from advocates in the community. And that's what makes this issue before us so difficult. I mean, when you read the reports, you know, that we were given, you know, it's tough. I mean, Ms. Merchant was very blunt. She said, "The budget as it stands today is unsustainable, and this council is going to need to make very strategic and challenging budget decisions in order to close a gap and eliminate the budget deficit to the best of their abilities without, you know, tapping into other resources." Another comment, unless the city council makes serious adjustments in the budget, the general fund will not have enough funds to continue operating past 2027. These are very, very serious comments. And one of the things, since I have worked my entire life in public service, that I have always believed in, and that is, when you start outstanding programs, you have to figure out how to sustain them. How will they continue? How will they be able to be expanded? How will they become just a part of our community? So that is a challenge that we have. And, you know, on our next subject, police services. We can also fill the room with that. Or public works. Anybody who drives on our roads usually complains, and especially when they take their car and have to get the front wheel alignment fixed. You know, so, I mean, every program that we provide has advocacy, and it's important for our quality of life. So I don't want to, you know, say, you know, okay, we're going to fund everything, because really, once we get through the presentations, once we ask the questions, once we receive new data from our staff, then the city council has the very difficult job of making the ultimate decisions. Now, I have to tell you, I was a part of Neighborhood Youth Corps back when I had come back from college. And it was very much a training program for youth in Antioch. Our office was at the old ABC building. And we hired about 40 or 50 youth, and it was extraordinary, absolutely extraordinary. It was back in 1978, '77, '78. The incredible changes that took place in these young men and women. You know, and the comments were made by a lot of the youth today about, you know, well, this was a real job, and you have to be there on time, and you have to do your best. And the skills that are provided usually were skills that they could use the rest of their life and be very successful. So I know personally upfront and have known for many, many years how important youth education, youth experience, mentorship programs are to our youth, because they also become very productive adults. And so this is an investment in our own community. The issue for us, the difficult issue, is how to find balance with all the needs, all the advocates that we have. I believe in our council. I know we have our advocates. And I believe that at the very end, we will be able to do that. But it's going to be tough. I mean, it's going to be very, very difficult. And when you see deficits into the, what is it, $13 million and $16 million in the next year, we know that whatever action we take are going to have consequences in the future. And so we have to balance that. And I'm ready to do it, but the decisions, the choices, are going to be very, very difficult as we move forward. I was happy to hear, and I hope it continues, that this is a serious business. It's not about finger pointing. It's not about looking in the past. It's not about conspiracies or anything else like that. I think the common denominator is we love our community. We want it to be successful. We have to find balance and move on. So I think this is a very good start, but I realize that in very short period of time, we really will have to make those tough decisions and move the community forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say that I've been to, in my 36-year career in government, I've been to a lot of city council meetings, and this was by far the most impressive meeting I've ever attended. I remember when Tasha would bring up students that, you know, couldn't say five words and were scared to death, and we had a bunch of expert public speakers up here that were putting Andrew Becker to shame, some of them. It was very, very impressive to just see the development over the past two or three years, and not just one or two of them, but all of them, and so you've done an amazing job. I want to commend Councilmember Wilson. It was her brainchild to bring forward the Angela Quinto Crisis Response Team back in 2018, 2017. Yeah, and so there was a lot of time and work that went into that, and she did a lot of research, and now we have a program that's in Minneapolis, and folks are talking about probably around the world one day. So, so thank you for bringing that forward. And just listening to everybody speak tonight is super inspirational. I've never been prouder of Antioch to hear the quality, the respect, just the way that folks were able to share their thoughts. It was, it was really, it was really amazing. And so just thank you to everybody who's been a part of that tonight. We do have difficult decisions with the budget when it comes to funding, you know, this, this department's funding actually hasn't gone, isn't staying level. It's actually increasing because there's a desire to add new programs and expand programs. The cost of programs are going up. And so the funding stream, whether it's been ARPA or grants or however it's been funded, are either no longer there in the case of ARPA, or are expiring this year or next year, and there's more funding that we need to look towards. So one of the things I'm just going to want to see in relationship to this budget and all the budgets is just more of a breakdown of how the general fund is specifically funding things. I asked something about the solid waste fund because I see that the general fund is funding more and more things while we have, we have APOC training to fund, and we have U.S. Department of Justice settlement agreements to fund. We have a lot of new things that we have to fund by mandate. And so we just need to see, or I would like to see specifically how the different departments are funded, whether it's through grant funding, whether it's through general funding or future grant funding or future other types of funding. I think it's just important for us to be able to distinguish. And also to see a history, the last couple of years, of how it has been funded, so then we can have a trajectory of how we want to fund things going forward. So that would be something I think would be really helpful to us as we're moving forward as a council, so we have all the information out there and the community to see where all the funds are going to be coming from. So as we're making decisions on how we're going to manage this budget, we can make really well-informed choices. So that would be my comment on that. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you know, the city manager has indicated we need to be data-driven, and I think particularly for the three new members of the council, it would be very helpful. I sometimes think staff assumes that we have all knowledge on all things. And, you know, if we're going to be data-driven, like Opportunity Village, we need to know what was successful, what was not successful. We learn more sometimes from our failures than we do from our successes. But we need to have honest assessment and information for us when we begin to form those decisions, because they're all impactful. You know, every single thing that we decide has an impact on our community. So if we truly are focused on data-driven, then we need to look at what we are doing and how is it being evaluated. So I would like that also to come back, please.
Yes, thank you so much. We can bring that back, and I did get the request, and it will go to you all in terms of drilling down by cost center. I think one of the things that Director Merchant has pointed out is that it's really hard for us to come to you with hard numbers when there's so much influx. And I also want to acknowledge our CDBG and Housing Consultant Teresa, who's here, as well as our City Treasurer, who is in the audience. And so we are talking about this, including investments and other things. So one of the things is, we're talking about is, what are the key performance indicators and metrics for success that tell us what our return on investment is? Which is why you will be getting Opportunity Village coming to you before we conclude these budget sessions to tell you what the outcomes are, and for as many programs as we have coming to you to tell you what the outcomes are. And we want to thank Felton Institute and all of our CBOs who have been in the audience today and who have spoken as well. So thanks.
One other thing I'd like to ask is, as Councilwoman, Tamisha Walker stated earlier about the CDBG, you know, when we first were going to get together, I think the day before, we were going to get together for our initial meeting, that's when the federal government had put a halt on all federal funds. Then everybody was kind of panicking. And we, we met, and we decided that we're going to proceed forward without knowing what actually funds are going to be available as we move forward. So there's a lot of balls in the air that we don't know how things are going to fall. I'm using CDBG as an example of that. I've heard the county possibly helping us with some of the initiatives that are being discussed around homelessness, around providing affordable or shelters for our unhoused community and so forth. So I think it'd be helpful for us to know of the grants that we're applying for, or any types of funding that we're hoping to receive, if we can get kind of an update on what additional fundings, resources that are out there that we have confirmation for that we're going to be receiving, and then those that we're pursuing that were just not there yet. Because it seems to me like there's a lot of things in the air, and some things maybe are closer to the finish line than others, but I really don't know where we're at in that race. So it would be helpful for us, I think, to know that when it comes down to making those final decisions when we get into the later part of this spring.
Sure, I can give you that information, and probably in a memorandum. I think, just like the mayor, Potem, has said, it's very hard to predict because we are waiting, based on federal and state, in terms of how things shake out. What I can say is that even though we're having these discussions, we're not waiting to go after additional funding opportunities. So for instance, we've applied for, I believe, almost $10 million in Measure X funding for youth for this last round that was due last week. And we want to give a shout out to our supervisor Burgess for making sure that we got around a technicality of a missed applicant's session. And I want to also thank Chair Taylor and Director Johnson for getting those funding applications to the finish line. I also want to thank Andrew Becker for meeting with me in these last couple of weeks, including today, and Bax, who was in the audience, to apply for three or four Home Key Plus funds, grants that are due at the end of the month, even though May 30th is a hard deadline. There are a lot of robust partnerships, cross collaborations in the breaking down of silos, as Councilmember Torres Walker has mentioned earlier, across departments, and even our boards and commissions, helping the city of Antioch and our supervisors. So please recognize that this is a new approach for the city, and we are aggressively going after funds. I also want to thank Councilmember Wilson for joining our call with Townsend Public Affairs on Friday as we go after state and federal funding very aggressively. So yes, I will provide an updated memorandum to you all because there are a lot of irons in the fire.
All right, yes, Councilmember Torres Walker.
I just wanted to put it out there that I think everybody who came tonight to speak about this department, I don't think one, one individual was a paid protester, a paid advocate. Right, like, and, like, these are people who genuinely showed up because they got an opportunity to access a level of resource that this city has never really provided since population growth. We're talking about, we are going to be talking about the budget process, and I understand that we have to be aware and be conscious of, like, you know, how are we managing public dollars, our tax dollars, right? Because we're, I'm a resident, I'm included in that. And when we're talking about a department that's only been in existence for two years and only receives 2% of the general fund, 2%. Two, if 2% is all we have to offer youth and young adults in this city, then we really have some, like, deep personal dives that we need to do. And that's just not even aside from Parks and Recreation, which is only funded a little bit, a level up, right, from this particular department. So as we go through, I'm just encouraging the public to, yes, show up and also, and also be critical. I also know that when governments start talking about cutting, we cut from the bottom and not from the top. And what we haven't discussed is the increase in salaries, contract negotiations, salary surveys that have exploded, inflated salaries in this city, where you have people being paid more than sometimes our residents, right? And the push is always for quality services, and we often don't get quality, even though we're paying a high rate of pay for it, but people have been getting quality. And they told us that tonight. We aren't addressing the lack of revenue and economic development since 2016, since, yeah, since the city of Antioch has really come out of the recession and the pandemic and the damage to small business, which impacts our revenue streams. We never talk about really how the resources that don't really come to this city. People say, "I'm a taxpayer, I'm a homeowner, I pay property tax." Well, 90%, almost 90% of those property taxes go to the county and don't come back to the city. So we do have revenue challenges. We have, we, but I think, like, the challenge is we always talk about cutting from the bottom and not cutting from the top. And, you know, I'm not saying that that's what's happening up here tonight. It's like, the city manager asks for support. And we, and we, this council literally, like, the support for the city manager failed without a second. But we're saying, like, how do we know if these funds are going to come in? Who are we putting up, who are we sending out? And our city manager is saying, "I'm doing it. Staff are doing it. We're recruiting community members to volunteer to do it." But, but I asked for a staff person to focus on that internal to the city because how much could, really, a functioning department of one hold when we know that this particular department is fully funded by grants? You know, I hate to say it, but, you know, when 45, 47 was running for office, he said he was going to bring the price of eggs down. And now he is telling us that we're going to suffer just a little bit more. And then once all of the things are cut from the bottom, then we'll see the trickle-down. Trickle-down economics is not real. It has never happened. And when people start telling you to be patient, when they're taking something from you, you should absolutely be concerned about that.
Mr. Mayor, can we please go on a five-minute break? I really need to go on a break.
Yes, we will take, we will take a break until 10 o'clock.
Okay, we'll be taking a break at 9:52 and returning at 10:00 p.m.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order at 10:01 PM. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll. Sorry.
Councilmember Torres Walker?
Present.
Councilmember Freitas?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rocha?
Here.
Mayor Bernal?
Here.
We have a quorum with all present.
All right, so it is now 10:01. I think there was a few more things possibly to talk about on this, on the item we were just on. And, and then we have, we have still the police, the police budget to go over. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend that we, we, if everybody can do it, meet an hour early before the next city council meeting next week to finish up this, this public safety and community resources budget. And then we move the, the police department budget to the 18th, which is gonna be our next, our next study session. So is that, is that work for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so can I get a motion to?
So move.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can you please cast your votes? Oh, yeah, tap, you have to tap.
Motion to move the Antioch Police Budget over to, what was it, March 18th? Oh, March 11th? So you, okay, so you said March 11th? Okay, so March 11th.
And, and, and then the, the study session on March 18th will be for the police department budget.
Okay. Okay, so special meeting, budget study session on March 18th for the Antioch Police Department.
Correct.
Passes 5-0.
All right. Do we have a motion? Oh, that was a motion to adjourn meetings. Oh, the motion to continue the meeting. All right, meeting is adjourned. All right, meeting is adjourned.
Meeting adjourned at 10:03 PM.